Actually, the first five wasn't even a city. And I've thought often, ever since you made that State of the City address at that luncheon, over and over, just how fortunate we are. It was a great description of what we have and where we live, and I really appreciate that. So I thought tonight would be a good time to offer a prayer of gratitude. I kept thinking about it, and I took the liberty of taking "I" and "me" out and put[29.34][29.34]"we" and "us," so if you want to include yourself as part of the "we," you're welcome. Would you pray with me, please? Thank you, Lord, for the blessings you have bestowed on our lives. You have provided us with more than we could ever imagine. You have, as tonight, surrounded us with people who are concerned with our welfare. You have given us family and friends who bless us every day with kind words and actions. You lift us up in ways that keep our eyes focused on You. And thank you, Lord, for keeping us safe. You have protected us from things that seem to haunt others. You help us make better choices. You have provided us with advisors that help us with difficult decisions. Lord, we are grateful for keeping those around us safe and loved, and I hope that You will provide us with the ability and sense to show them every day how much they matter. I pray that You remind us how blessed we are, and You never allow us to forget to show our gratitude in prayer and in returned kind acts. Thank you, in His name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Okay, the next part of the agenda is our presentations and proclamations, our Business of the Month, who will be provided to us by our management analyst, Robert Cidita.
Good evening, Mayor Vera, members of the City Council. Tonight, I'm pleased to announce the Business of the Month for July 2015, John's Fish Market. We are joined this evening by one of its owners, Sharon Manser. Located in the majestic Dana Point Harbor, Sharon and her husband, John, opened John's Fish Market 35 years ago. Prior to opening the market, John worked as a commercial fisherman out of Dana Point Harbor, and Sharon worked as a housing manager for the University of California, Irvine. While working in the harbor, John saw that the fish market had closed and inquired about reopening it. Those plans worked out, and since then, it's been the go-to place in the harbor for food and fresh seafood. Since opening John's Fish Market in 1980, the business has grown and now has 20 employees. John's Fish Market carries a variety of quality, fresh fish, and their selection changes daily depending on the fish that are in season. Many of the fish they offer, including their yellowtail and tuna, are provided by local fishermen. They carry a selection of both raw and smoked fish, and smoke their fish daily, with customer favorites including Alaskan halibut, salmon, and swordfish. John's Fish Market also carries local spiny lobsters from the month through October and March. In addition to the quality raw and smoked fish, John's Fish Market also offers fish and chips, calamari and chips, scallops and chips, fish and shrimp tacos, and fish and calamari sandwiches, name a few. They pride themselves on providing the best and freshest seafood and stand by all the items they carry. This quality and great customer service and the appreciation they show their customers has kept both residents and visitors coming back for more. On behalf of the City Council, I'd like to congratulate John's Fish Market for being selected Business of the Month for July. We wish you many more years of continued success.
I attend John's Fish Market quite frequently, mainly because our dog can join us, as we set out in front. So a lot of dog people are there, and a lot of us know each other, and we tend to meet there. But I know you've been there for, since, what was it?
Nineteen eighty.
Nineteen eighty. Have you seen? Tell me a little bit about what you've seen in the changes since then.
Oh, the changes? It doesn't stop changing down in the harbor. Mostly, I think, business is going in and out, but there's a lot of people that have been there for a long time, and we really do attract more like a family, I think, than customers.
Yeah, very good. So we're going to present you with a proclamation from the city, certificate of recognition for the city of Dana Point. It is great pleasure in featuring John's Fish Market. This one is spelled wrong. I'll get that fixed. You notice who signed it?
I do.
So at least I should catch it. Yes. And we extend our congratulations on behalf of being named Dana Point's featured Business of the Month. And I also want to give you a pen from the city. And then we have Heather from the Chamber wants to join in on us.
Just wanted to say congratulations on being selected. You are part of the reason why it makes Dana Point unique. Thank you for being in business for so long, for supporting all of your other businesses. We're going to give you a free year membership for the Dana Point Chamber, and anything we can do to continue to help you with your success, just let us know. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, and my dog and I will be down there shortly. Yes, we had our drawing now. Our shop, Del Prado, is still going on. Some changes occurred late this afternoon on Del Prado.
Oh, I was about to talk with the contest.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay, we did it.
Bob and Linda Thiel.
Shopping at Llantern Bay Carpets.
At Llantern Bay, how about that? So Bob and Linda Thiel, contact the Chamber and pick up your, what did they get this time?
It's a night at the Ritz Carlton, Proud Marys, and Ocean Institute Cruise for two. So, pretty nice package. Yeah.
Sounds like a great incentive for getting next month's drawing.
City employees and elected officials in Chamber cannot win.
The next thing we got during this time, the next thing we got is our July Employee of the Month. And so, Mr. Kilabur, you'd like to make that presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for selecting, get in the middle here, for selecting a wonderful employee, Ms. Robin Harnish, as our July Employee of the Month. You couldn't have selected a better employee, even though, honestly, as, you know, kind of being in charge of human resources here, we only have exceptional employees. Robin does stand out, though. Robin's been with us since 2012. We actually brought her in through a temp agency when we were a little bit short-staffed, and her positive attitude, incredible work ethic, and, you know, just a great person to be around. We were kind of hoping that she would stick around, and she actually went back to school and took some more advanced accounting classes, and earned certificates in accounting, and actually earned becoming one of the city's accountants. She's been instrumental the last couple of years. We installed new accounting systems, a lot of tedious and complex work. She's done an exceptional job. And again, thank you very much for recognizing her as the Employee of the Month. And she has with her here, did I get it right, Kenny and Suzie?
Jim and Suzie.
Jim and Suzie, here to support her, part of her family network, and we want to go ahead and welcome them up as well for some pictures. And also, Robin is very special. Many of her coworkers have also come in to support her tonight.
Let me add to that. In the professional world where I was a manager of engineering, one of the things I enjoyed the best is bringing some people in on a temp basis from a contract agency. And then we were able to talk to them afterwards because they were so perfect to keep them. And so, the fact that the city does that and employs that method, I really support that, and thank you for being our little experiment, we might say. And thank you for joining us. So, Robin. Robin performs accounting and treasury-related duties, including processing and overseeing payroll, processing daily and monthly accounting records, assisting with accounts receivable and accounts payable. You're nice to know. Banking and financial reporting. Robin assists with annual audits and assists with the budget preparation. She's become a valuable asset to the city by demonstrating initiative, enthusiasm, and dedication each day. She has earned a professional achievement certificate in accounting for governmental and nonprofit organizations through UC Riverside. Her strong work ethic and calm professional and friendly demeanor have gained her great respect among her coworkers. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Oh! Where'd the pricks go? Wrong cup, thank you. Water in that cup. We're now going to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the City Council, the public, or staff request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Madam Clerk, are there any items to be removed by the staff or the public?
By the public, I have item nine, ten, and twelve.
Mrs. Chakavas, anything by the staff?
Not this evening, sir.
By the council. So far, we have nine, ten, and twelve being pulled.
I have a correction to the minutes from our last council meeting. I don't have the item on that one.
One? It's already been added. Two?
Item two. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Item two. Any others? We got two, nine, ten, and twelve. Seeing no others, motion to approve the balance.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded that we approve the balance of the consent calendar. All those in favor, cast your vote. Okay, the motion carries five-zero. So we'll start with number two. Mr. Tomlinson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just have one correction on the meetings attended. I did attend a meeting for Nelson Nygaard on June 15th.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments on item two? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favors, cast your ballot. Motion carries five-zero. Moving on to item nine. Do we have any requests to speak? Thank you. I'd like to call up to the podium, Anne Romano from Capo Beach. Please state your name and your place of residence.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members, and staff. I'm Anne Romano from Capistrano Beach, and I'm also a member of Capo Cares. We are delighted that council has supported our requests for immediate cleaning and improvements for Doheny Village. We are happy to see that work has started on Doheny Park Road, including repairing and cleaning sections of sidewalk, and we also look forward to more addition repairs and replacements as outlined in the agenda report. And the newly paved city parking lot at Doheny and Domingo is lighted, so hop on that trolley to the harbor and elsewhere, Laguna Art Festivals, who knows? And don't forget the farmer's market Wednesday from 11:00 to 4:00. We deserve, they deserve our support for coming back on this adjusted schedule, so thank you. My personal favorite, as I may have mentioned, is the unattractive asphalt medians, and I hope the city is able to secure Caltrans approval and grant funding sooner rather than later. Lighting improvements will be included in the final plan. Oopsie. Lack of good lighting has been a constant problem in Doheny Village. See, that's why you don't do widows and orphans. While permanent lighting improvements will be included in the final plan, we appreciate the approach of assisting businesses with solutions such as timers and low-energy bulbs so they can keep their lights on later. Coast highway lighting will also be improved as part of Phase One Bike and Pedestrian Project to start, I believe, in fiscal year 16, according to the report. And a sentiment that we have heard from nearly all merchants is their dismay at the lack of holiday lighting in the past. We are thrilled with the plans for lit wreaths, a 20-foot lighted holiday tree, and a decorated garland at the Boulder Entry Monument. Lighting will also be added on Camino de Estrella and our holiday palm tree at Palisades and PCH. We also want to commend code enforcement for their diligence in responding to the never-ending scourge of stray shopping carts and other nuisance in the village and elsewhere, especially the Bermuda Triangle, thanks to Mark Sutton and Angela Dusic. We will enjoy posting progress photos on our Facebook page, facebook.com/capocares. So keep up the great work.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Romano. Ms. Chakavas, anything that staff wants to add on that?
No, we don't. I want to thank Mr. Fowler for putting that report together, and as Ms. Romano has stated, it's a pretty comprehensive overview, and as the year progresses and we get further along with the planning process, as well as identify grant funding sources, we'll move forward. I was going to call the city manager of San Juan Capistrano to talk about possibly working collaboratively with one of the asphalt, or not asphalt, one of the medians that belong to the city about us possibly taking over the landscaping and maintenance of that. Unfortunately, the San Juan city manager is in transition, or will be in transition shortly, to a new assignment with City Events and Needers. So we're going to see what kind of dialogue we can initiate there, but that may take a little bit longer than we would like due to the personnel change at San Juan Capistrano, but it's something we are looking at.
Okay, thank you. Any comments by council? Here are motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded, please cast your vote. And the motion passes five-zero. Next off, the consent calendar is item 10, which is the 11th Amendment to Employment Agreement for the City Manager. Mr. Chakavas, do you want to provide us with the staff report?
I think it would be more appropriate for Mr. Munoz, since he had worked with you, and the mayor brought him in the crafting of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chakavas. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, what we have before us is a staff report that reflects the positive performance evaluation that the council has provided for the city manager. The only amendment to the contract is to provide for a 2.9% increase in each of the next two years. Have any questions? We'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Is there any questions of staff? And open the public hearing. We have one request to speak, Steve Stewart. Please state your name and place of residence.
My name is Steve Stewart. I live in Monarch Beach, and I operate a business in Capo Beach. I wanted to speak to the compensation issue here. It wasn't clear from the agenda what this item was about, but it could be surmised that it had something to do with additional compensation. It's kind of a well-known at this point that Dana Point is financially challenged. We had general fund reserves of $55 million in 2008, and by the end of 2015, they were projected to be at $19 million. That's a decline of $35 million over seven years. We had operating deficits, by some calculations, in 2009, 2011, 2012, and 2013. I think that speaks to management. If you look at nearby cities, Laguna Nigal has twice the population of Dana Point with 67,000 people, and it has reserves of $75 million. Their city manager is paid about $275,000 a year, plus a car and insurance. Comparing to San Clemente, they have a 63,500 population and $56 million in reserves. Their city manager is paid about $212,000. Dana Point has 33,000 people, has dropped to 19 million in reserves, and our manager is paid very close to $297,000 in total compensation. Does the deteriorating financial position of our city merit giving him more compensation? The council should evaluate his performance in light of these hard, objective facts. It should be very obvious to you that no additional compensation is justified.
Thank you very much. I'll close the public comments and bring them back to the City Council. Mr. Schoffel?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. First of all, as the eldest here on the, well, not the eldest, but certainly the longest serving for seven years, I've worked with Mr. Chakavas very closely during that period of time and before when I was on the Planning Commission. And notwithstanding the public comment, I think he's done a fine job. If I vote no on the proposed base-building compensation increase, it's only because it is a base-building increase. It base builds to retirement, and my evaluation of the survey is such that I think the more appropriate compensation adjustment, because I certainly believe Mr. Chakavas deserves something, would be a non-base-building bonus of, you know, the council's pleasure. So that would be my suggestion, and I certainly, if I'm the one or more who fails to join in the recommended action, it does not reflect on Mr. Chakavas, but rather my unwillingness to approve a base-building adjustment at this time.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Any other comments? I'll throw in my review of the part of the package that we've been given, prepared to us by Mr. Munoz, is our City Manager Total Compensation Survey done of the cities in Orange County. And it puts Dana Point based on, based on total compensation, let's see, it's based on, it has base salary and total compensation. One of the things you could pick out of that is that Mr. Chakavas is one of the senior managers, city managers, in Orange County. Laguna Hills has a 24-year tenure, and Irvine a 10-year, Lake Forest 19-year, and the rest of them are ones, twos, threes, and fours. Yet he's about, just above average, or just above the median on the survey chart. Dana Point has done quite well. We used to go through a cycle of city managers back in the '90s. A lot of us may remember that. I think the whole city staff went without any merit increases previously for about four years, and that was because of the recession, and we're being very fiscally prudent. So I support the recommendation that the Pro-Tam and I put together with the help of Mr. Munoz. Any other comments? Mr. Mueller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, after listening to Councilmember Schoffel's comments, in theory, I agree with him in terms of the base-building, you know, raises, but however, in practice, you know, I just have to wonder, at what level do you stop allowing bases to increase? You know, is it a, do we pay them all on bonuses moving forward? From this point, we give them one salary, and then everything else is based on a bonus? I mean, in practice, I just don't think that works. And when I look at the staff here in Dana Point, you know, I got to tell you, I can't find anyone that's not exceptional. Everybody I talk to feels are exceptional. And that goes back to leadership, and the person who's actually interviewing and hiring these people, and that's Mr. Chakavas. So even though I agree in theory with Councilmember Schoffel, I can't support that in practice, and I'm going to support the agenda item as written. Thanks.
I'll add to that. I understand the philosophy between base building and, also, there's another term used as spiking. I think we're doing, you try to balance everything and award where the performance is best served, and I think we're pretty well overdue for Mr. Chakavas right now. Any others?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a few comments.
Yeah, Mayor Pro-Tam?
Even though I've only been on the council a few months, I appreciate Mr. Chakavas and all he does in keeping us informed and keeping us abreast of all the activities that are going on. He does a very good job when I experience an individual that's far and few between. And his tenure as a city manager really became to light when I was at the ICSC conference, and I saw a lot of junior city managers coming up to Mr. Chakavas for questions and help in their city manager jobs. We have a lot of junior city managers in this county, and I think his tenure is very important in this time that we're going through here in the city of Dana Point. I gave my own employees a 3% raise this year, and I think that was justified in my business conditions and my perspective. And I also am sensitive to Mr., are sensitive to Mr. Schoffel's comments about base building. I would say, you know, if we gave anything more than 3%, yes, that would be probably appropriate to work then to some format of bonus, but I think a 3%, 2.9% wage adjustment is appropriate at this time.
Thank you, Pro-Tam. And that brings to mind, when you talk about seniority again, one thing about when a city has a problem, and we'll take marijuana use, which Dana Point took the lead in it in the county, whether it's sober living homes, or whether it's any other issue that may be litigious, then a city has taken the lead while the other cities follow. Dana Point has done that job as being a leader, and other issues that are going on in the city right, going on in the county right now, we're looking to other cities. Yes, it's usually accomplished by the city managers getting together and talking over their problems. No city is an island in the county, and so I think that the fact that we have good leadership within Dana Point, that we're able to work with all the other counties to help craft things, legislations, policies, ordinances that benefit all, so we don't have one community doing one thing and another community doing another. With that said, then, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, Mr. Mueller?
I'd like to address the comment that was made about our financial stability, and I think I'd like to ask Mr. Kilabur to respond to that. The numbers that I hear thrown around, I try to figure out what they mean and where they come from. When I look at our financial statements, I don't understand where the starting balance and ending balance is, and I'd like to address, have Mr. Kilabur address that for me.
Just in general, and not having the numbers in front of me, our general fund is very structurally sound. We've hovered around $20 million from prior to the recession till now in the general fund. We do have a capital improvements fund, which are for one-time outlays, capital improvement projects that did build up during the early, from 2000, since the St. Regis was built early, from 2000 into about 2006, '07, that a lot of plans were put together to spend on doing different projects, and the city's accomplished those things over the last few years. So the general fund is sound. There's nothing wrong with the general fund's fund balance. I'm very happy as the CFO and as a resident with the financial condition of the general fund.
Thank you. I've been hearing that a lot, and I just wanted to try to understand what was happening with that, because I couldn't make the numbers make sense, and thank you for your report. Thanks.
Thank you. You know, Mr.-
Mr. Bixorik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In an effort not to repeat what's already been said, just very quickly, I do think that stability, continuity, institutional knowledge, those things are important to have, and that's what our city manager brings. When somebody performs well, their performance should be looked at, and if necessary, rewarded. And in this case, I think this is a fair increase to continue the services of our city manager, and I think we're well-served by it. So with that, I'll move the recommended motion, action. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
If I'm moving second to move the recommended action for item ten, please cast your vote. And the motion carries four to one. The next item on the agenda calendar we're gonna consider is item twelve. Mr. Chakavas, staff report, please.
Yes, item number twelve. Mayor Alvera, as, as promised, we, and as directed by the council, we said we would return with a monthly update on the Doheny Village Plan, and I want to commend and thank Cindy Nelson for her efforts to pull this together, and just as we had anticipated, with a proven performer of her stature, she's doing a magnificent job, and I really appreciate the job Cindy you're doing in pulling this all together and putting together these updates. If I could, I'd like you to just, if you could find a microphone, give a quick overview of where we're going and what we're doing, and also included in here, as promised, is an attachment, is a report from our chief, Russ Chilton. I want to thank you, chief, for having your coffee connections down at Donut World. I hear they're very well-attended, and you're getting a lot of good feedback and support from the business community down there, so thank you very much for doing that. So Cindy, if you could just give the council a bit of an overview, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you for your kind words. It's a team effort, and we've had a very busy month. We are nearing the completion of the first phase of the economic analysis. The consultants actually concluded their work, we're meeting with them soon, and from there, we will begin modeling a few development scenarios to better understand the economic impacts of different land uses and densities. After that is concluded, we will then schedule some, the council will do that information, and that will then start the platform for moving forward with the completion of the land use concept plan. In addition, under, attended this evening is a contract award with Opticos Design, and we have recommended that they be the firms elected to work with us to finalize the land use plan. Is my speaker not on?
I'm sorry. Sorry, thank you. To finalize the land use plan and actually write the form-based code for the area. As part of that process, we will engage in additional community and stakeholder meetings, beginning with a town hall meeting and interviews of key stakeholders in early September, and that will be followed by a four-day public charrette that will be held in mid-October. Upon conclusion of that charrette, we will have the parameters defined for the land use plan. From there, we can then initiate the environmental impact report. So in the meantime, I'll be drafting the request for proposals for the EIR consultant, so that when that land use plan concept is completed, we'll be in a position to put an item on your agenda to award a contract, so that we can commence the environmental impact report. In the meantime, with regard to environmental issues, we've met with Public Works to discuss some issues that were brought to our attention on an adjacent development property, the Zephyr property, where there are liquefaction issues and some hydrology flood control issues. We want to make sure that we don't underestimate the extent of those issues in Doheny Village, because it could add additional time to the environmental studies that we plan to undertake. So we're getting a head start and initiating some groundwork, if you will, with those two consulting firms to identify any potential issues that would require further study. In addition, I've had a few meetings with Capital Cares, including residents and business people. We have regular dialogue. I think things are going well, and, and I appreciate your comments this evening. I think they, they realize that a serious commitment has been made by the council and the staff to keep things moving as quickly as possible. So we have a lot ahead of us here in the next couple of months with the planning effort. You'll all be invited to participate. You'll be asked to also be interviewed by the consultant, and we're awaiting a final work schedule from them, and we'll provide that to you within the next week. Once they know that their contract's been approved, we'll be able to be in a position to get that information together for everybody, and then we'll start sending public notices out. Also, the Chamber of Commerce, in conjunction with some of us staff members, will be meeting with the business owners in Doheny Village. That meeting has been set for the twenty-ninth of July, and, let's see, what else am I forgetting here? As Doug mentioned, the police services plan is attached, and I know that there was, I received some good feedback about the chat with the chief at Donut World, so I know people are looking forward to continuing those as well. Oh, and Ursula and I and Matt Sinicori met with one of the property owners of the Amco Transmission Site, and it's two brothers, it's basically, it's really a family trust. Two brothers manage the trust. They are very interested in working with the city to look at options for their property, or even if they kept those tenants on their site, beautifying the property. So they were very open to having continued dialogue with us, and they appreciated the opportunity to be updated on the activities that are currently underway in Doheny Village. So we'll continue that dialogue with the property owner in hopes of seeing some improvement there. And then I also spoke to the owner of Pepe's, who has taken over the Surf and Cowboy. She was actually on vacation, and so we're supposed to touch base this week to set up a time for me to come visit with her and just get to know her and learn more about her proposed operation and welcome her to the community and bring her up to date on the activities in Doheny Village. So a busy month, and I think the next few months are going to be extremely busy, but we're, we're happy with the progress to date.
And the thing I want to just, I think I'm gonna start buying lottery tickets, because I'm feeling very lucky. The fact of the matter is, we're gonna have Mr. Charles View join our staff, and as our interim planning manager, Mr. View, prior to the City of San Juan assignment, was the community development director for the City of Brea. And if I had to pick three really good examples of community development in the county, it would be Anaheim, Santa Ana, and Brea. So the fact that we have Cindy from Santa Ana and Charlie from Brea onboard, the expertise that they bring to our already-strong team, I think there's nothing but a tremendous upside, and we're gonna really benefit the fruit of that effort. So again, Cindy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'll open up the public comments for this item, twelve, and the first to speak is Catherine Carpenter. Be followed by Larry Robinson. Please state your name and place of residence.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Catherine Carpenter. I spoke at the last council meeting, and I just wanted to bring a few points, but I'll address it at these open sessions that they're planning for the Doheny Village. But basically, I was just gonna say, there's very few, I don't know how many residents actually work and live in the Doheny Village as myself, and I'm really worried about the future development in our area in the residential side. I know there's a lot of potential in the commercial, very valuable land, a lot of money, a lot of possibilities for developing that area. But I am also concerned about the residential side, that they were taken into consideration, as I mentioned last time, the bus yard. I know you were kind, I saw on the agenda that they're looking into the land use on the school property, as I had mentioned about the Doheny family allocating it for the children of the community. If that is not, if that does not come up and not a valid document, I know it's through Los Angeles County and sometimes Sacramento, you have to find some of these older documents, that the city probably might consider even purchasing this property for the community. It is the entrance into the community and the gateway into our city, and like I said, all things for the community have been taken out of our village, and arts, or a theater, or a museum, or as you mentioned yourself, mayor, the cultural event, our history, there's so much rich, rich history to our area, and you say you want a pedestrian zone and to attract the tourists. Well, we need an attraction again. We've lost the Sarah Elementary School. Many of you do not even know, knew it existed. I did. I grew up there. I went to school there. There was an auditorium, there was fields, there was Boys and Girl Scouts, there was summer recreation programs, or even a theater, cultural center, arts, museums, surfer heritage. That is, Sepulveda, the street I live is surfer-rich. We have Hobie that started behind the post office. We have Whitey Harrison. We had Ronald Drummond. We have Tom Morey was my namer, world champion surfer, Miggy Munoz. We had Surfer Magazine down our street, Skateboard Magazine with John Severson. So there's a lot of history regarded to the mission, to Richard Henry Dana, to our, our culture, and I think if we forget our, some of the culture will be bad. But let me say one thing. Two mayors, as I quote, Richard Daley and Woody Dumas from Baton Rouge and Chicago. Politicians don't bring people together, artists do. The arts are the best insurance policy a city can take on itself. So I really, truly request that you bring and supply our community and enrich our community once again with the arts, with culture, and make all the tourist area a zone so they can walk on their side into our city as a welcoming mat into our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your input. Appreciate that. Larry Robinson, be followed by Tony Nelson. Please state your name and place of residence.
Good evening, Mayor Alvera, council members, and city staff. My name is Larry Robinson, resident and commercial property owner in Capistrano Beach. Primarily, I'd like to acknowledge Cindy Nelson for the efforts made into inquiring into the unique heritage of the Doheny Village area, and the city manager's measured and wise approach in obtaining a consensus from the community towards honoring that heritage. Attain the goal of a vibrant, active, pedestrian-friendly village atmosphere, I am sure would get accolades from the Coastal Commission in their approval process. My question is whether there is a budget projection that can be expected towards accomplishing these goals. What is a realistic timeframe? As a resident and commercial property owner, I have a vested interest in the outcome and encourage the city council to establish reserves towards achieving these goals. Separately, I wish to thank Chief Chilton for the time given to address the nuisances in the village. Especially concerning to me is the increase in what now is clearly gang activity evidenced by tagging and graffiti. Last night, one of my commercial properties was tagged, very disturbing for my tenants and myself to observe. Certainly, I think the safety of our village is very important in the perspective that it gives others, and I want to thank you for all the efforts that are made to provide a safe environment for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Please state your name and place of residence.
Hi, I'm Tony Nelson, and I live in Capistrano Beach. Good evening, Mayor Alvera, and council members and city staff. As co-founder of Capital Cares, I want to thank all of you for agreeing to our requests for moving forward on the Doheny Village Plan and making plans for the much-needed interim improvements in the area. It's clear that we have been heard, and that you not only take our requests seriously, but have already taken many concrete steps toward revitalization of this unique part of Capistrano Beach. As Councilman Schoffel puts it, Doheny Village is the very soul of Dana Point. From the bottom of our hearts, we thank you. We were delighted to meet with interim economic development manager Cindy Nelson on two occasions, and wish to thank her for her ongoing listening to the concerns of residents and business owners and sharing her considerable expertise. We're very, very impressed. It's clear that Ms. Nelson understands the distinct character of Doheny Village and acknowledges our hopes that both its history and surfing heritage will be preserved and enhanced as plans are developed. It's a pleasure to work with someone who clearly shares our passion for what promises to be an exciting transformation. Staff has made tremendous progress on cleaning, lighting, and landscaping, and we're looking forward to much, much-needed additional changes on both Doheny Park Road and along PCH. Our sincere thanks go to Brad Fowler and to Matt Sinicori. We understand that some of these changes will take time, but change is coming, and residents and business owners are very pleased. We hope the city will continue to work with property owners to encourage further improvements of private lots as we await longer-term changes. We're very pleased that Chief of Police Lieutenant Chilton has started bimonthly public coffee chats, we're calling them chief chats, at Donut World, where concerned citizens can engage the chief in open discussion about crimes and nuisances in the area. We thank the chief and our hard-working sheriff's deputies as they increase bike and other patrols to create an obvious and consistent police presence. Business owners and residents await the day when we can take back our neighborhood and walk anywhere in the village without fear of witnessing or being subject to unsavory behaviors. We are particularly pleased, as noted in the minutes of the June sixteenth meeting, that city manager Doug Chakavas proposed directing anticipated budget surpluses to funding for the Doheny Village Plan. It's vital that we have the funds necessary to keep this plan on track. We applaud the effort of council and staff to ensure that this plan continues to move forward expeditiously, with the necessary commitments in terms of both manpower and funding to make this dream a reality. We're off to a great start, and citizens of Capistrano Beach and all of Dana Point offer our sincere gratitude. Thank you, residents and business owners, for your support throughout this process, and thank you, city council and staff, for reigniting this plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That being the conclusion of the public request to speak, so I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion. This is a receive and file item, so there's no action, no, actually no action to be taken, but I sure would like to have a lot of dialogue on this so we can encourage this dialogue to continue. Mr. F. Pro-Tam.
Yes, the chief has become quite a popular guy in Capistrano Beach from his coffee chats. I haven't attended one, but he's enormously popular.
Actually, the chief's very good at it.
Maybe the chief can give us a little update on what's going on, since I personally haven't seen it, and maybe you can fill us in a little bit.
Well, in response to the last meeting, in the concern of some of the residents and business owners, a lack of presence down there, I'll be increasing the bike patrol. Currently, we have six deputies trained and equipped in bike patrol, and historically, we've ran the bike patrol from the summer months, and it's on an as-need basis, and it's citywide. It's not just Doheny Village, and they average about ten hours a week. It's run through our community services unit. I'm in the process right now to double the number of deputies, which will definitely give an increased bike patrol presence down there in the village, and will focus more on the village and other areas of the community. Traffic enforcement, I got motors up on Camino Cap in the area of Palisades. They're getting a lot of high-fives from the people who live along there. So I'll come back at a later meeting with the findings on the violations and what's trending up there. All else good, I really have been enjoying the coffee chats. It's amazing what you find out when you talk to people face-to-face. Met some old friends, and it's all going well.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Fowler, as Public Works, can I ask you for your opinion? Most of the work you do is underground. We hardly see it sometimes, but until it gets re-asphalated, but maybe you can give us a little picture in the future of what we have to do in Capistrano Beach.
Well, you know, the council approved a significant amount of budget work for our residential streets. Tonight, you, and so we're in the five-million-dollar arena there, and with all our street projects, but a significant amount of that will help with the, you know, the questions that we get from individual streets and individual residents. Tonight, you approved a Slurry Seal contract, and that Slurry Seal contract has streets for Slurry Seal throughout the city and include a number of streets in Capistrano Beach as well. We, we covered a number of items in the agenda report today on, on issues there with some work along Doheny Park Road that we have. We have the project to do the improvements along Coast Highway for half the stretch to provide a bicycle path that includes lighting and a landscaped strip along the beach area there. And we will apply for the next grant opportunity to run the second half of that project that would continue it from the pedestrian bridge up to Doheny Park Road. We have the connectivity study that we've done that shows some improvements that help in the area where Ann talked about the asphalt median strips in there. We will have to work with Caltrans on some of that, but we have the plan. So as we get grant opportunities that come in, in the future here from, particularly from OCTA, we'll be applying for that as well. And the city manager talked about the entry median on Doheny Park Road and our efforts there and with AMCO. That's kind of the entryway on the north end of Doheny Park Road are, are items that we would like to continue to pursue.
I've seen the, or read the connectivity, connectivity study that you referred to, and very impressed with it. How can we ensure that the public gets aware, can read that or see that?
I, we can put it on the website. I think it's there, but we can highlight it in a better fashion. And I can make sure to send it to Capital Cares as an example because I'm not sure if they've looked at it, you know, in some detail as well.
That's a good study to try and how link the different portions of Dana Point together better through traffic, bike, and pedestrian walkways, and some of the enhancements that are planned outside of the village, enhancements that are planned for that area. So try to find that on our website and take a look at that. Any other council comments?
I just had a question of Mr. Chocavas. Mr. Chocavas, maybe you can help me understand how the new plant, interim planning manager would be assistance in developing the Doheny Village Plan?
Just by having their presence in the room, one of the things you'll find is that we work very collaboratively as a team. And the fact of the matter is, is one of the key things when council created this position for us is because of how basically we're overwhelmed with the amount of development activity going on in our city. And so the fact that Mr. View is going to have an office back there, Ursula and her team have roundtable discussions on the various projects through staff meetings, and I know because of the expertise he brings, there'll be ample opportunity. I know Cindy has a, a professional relationship with Mr. View, and he comes highly recommended from Cindy. And so the fact that they have a, a professional relationship there, so that, that breaks down that barrier of trying to initiate a dialogue, and I'm sure there's a dialogue that's already commenced. So just the fact of having him on the team and what he brings, it's gonna, it's really gonna add to the, to the team and, and the energy that's going on over there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? And a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Please cast your vote. And the motion carries 5-0. That concludes our consent calendar I loans. We'll move to our public comments. Madam Clerk, do we have requests to speak?
I'm sorry, can I read the titles of the ordinances?
Oh, read the titles of the ordinances, yes, please.
I have three ordinances tonight. One would be Item 19, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Dana Point, California approving Zone Text Amendment ZTA 15-0001 to amend the city zoning ordinance, Chapter 9.26 and corresponding Appendix E, generally referred to as the Dana Point Town Center Plan to address parking regulations and a title change of the document to Dana Point Lantern District Plan. And submission is part of the Local Coastal Program Amendment LCPA 15-0001 for approval and certification by the California Postal Commission. Then Item 20 has two ordinances. The first one, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Dana Point, California, mending Chapter 12.08 to allow parking meter slash pay station slash mobile device payment zones. And then the last ordinance is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Dana Point, California, adding Chapter 12.20 of the Dana Point Municipal Code establishing a parking benefit district south of Del Prado in the Lantern Village. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll move on to public comments. Do we have public requests to speak? No requests to speak. Then we'll move on to Item 18. Mr. Chocavas?
Yes, Item Number 18 is our third and final phase of the annual weed abatement program. Now would be the time for the council to conduct a public hearing to hear any objections to the costs that have been levied or, or about to be levied associated with the cleanup of weeds. This allows property owners an opportunity to come in and contest that. We would suggest you, we would recommend that you have that public hearing. Then after that public hearing is completed, that you find that the costs are adequate and authorize us to begin the collection process. So with that, staff and I would be happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any requests to speak? Seeing none, I'll bring it to the council.
Move the recommended action, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Schoffel. Is there a second?
Seconded.
They moved and seconded for Item 18. Please cast your ballot. And the motion carries 5-0. And move on to Item 19, Zone Text Amendment. Mr. Chocavas?
Yes, Item Number 19, Mayor, is our item relating to the Town Center Zone Text Amendment relating to the Town Center Parking Plan. What I'd like to do is if I could, make a few brief remarks and then turn it over to Ms. Luna Reynosa so that she and her team can provide a more in-depth report. As the council and the community is aware, back in June of 2008, the City, the California Coastal Commission adopted our Town Center Plan. Then because of the recession, the plan sat there for a while. And then on or about 2013, we began a public outreach process to deal with the parking issues as the economy began, and we started seeing signs of recovery. What's important to point out is we've had a number of public meetings associated with parking. Up until this time, and I know Ms. Luna Reynosa will correct me if I mistake this, but our parking standards have basically remained unchanged since the city was incorporated back in 1989. And we're basically inherited from the county. As such, because they're so strict, we have created a situation where we have a surplus of parking in the town center. With the caveat that we may have a surplus, but it's not convenient parking. It's not parking right out in front of the development. People do have to walk, and, and some people don't like to walk. I like to walk. But having said that, we do have what's determined to be a surplus of parking in the town center. Having said that, one of the things that we started examining, we called in Nelson Nygaard to help us with that, is because our parking guidelines or standards haven't been updated since the city incorporated, we need to do something. What's interesting, and I've come to find, is that with the demise of redevelopment in the state, cities are looking at ways where they can encourage and incentivize development. The key is to incentivize, encourage development without giving away the store. That is to say that you don't overextend yourself to the point that you're, you're, you're doing it for the wrong reason. So there has to be a careful balance. So what Nelson Nygaard has done is gone in and taken a look at the residential and the non-residential. The non-residential approach that they've taken is a blended parking rate. Blended in a sense that what it allows people to do to take a look at use patterns, and rather than having a parking standard tied to any one particular development, it comes with a, and Patrick, correct me if I mistake this, a factored blended rate that allows for parking to come together in a collaborative way. Collaborative in a sense that you may have professional uses that are peak periods, or let's say from eight until five, but then after five o'clock, they shutter their door and go home. And then you have restaurants and other uses that pick up between, let's say, four and 10 o'clock. And then you have the residential. The residential's been carved away, so we're just trying to find a way where we can come up with an optimal blending so that we can take, take advantage of our surplus that exists, but also identifies a way to come up with convenient parking that's close to the use. The other aspect about the blended approach is that it, it incentives, or it doesn't incentivize, but it takes away the barriers for future use of a piece of property based upon what was there before. Having said that, Nelson Nygaard has gone in and done a pretty good job of taking, taking a look of what has worked in other cities. What the council has before you tonight is a culmination of public input, planning commission input, professional input from the experts. And the hope is, is that we will get input from the public. We can have a healthy, vigorous, robust dialogue tonight to come up with a plan that, that moves us a little bit closer down the road. Will we come up with a perfect plan? Probably not, but I think if we have an open mind and we work together in a collaborative, collegial way, we can come up with an approach that moves the ball down the road. One of the things that we have to keep in mind here is that this is an evolution. We're gonna, and it's stated in the staff report, we're gonna have a management program. We're gonna be continually reviewing this and reporting back to council with items that will trigger reviews before this council, see if the plan needs to be changed. So having said that, it's, it's a very dynamic process. It's a process that a lot of cities struggle with, you know. To say that it's been easy, that, that wouldn't be true. But having said that, I think by virtue of the studies that have been done, an examination of what has worked in other cities, as well as input from the public, I, I think the council can come up with, with a solution that moves us down the road, gets it before the California Coastal Commission, and come, comes up with a, with a plan that updates the standards that quite candidly have been in existence, that we've inherited from the county and have been in existence for over 25 years. So with that, Ursula, I want to turn it over to you and Patrick and the staff to provide a more in-depth overview for the council.
Excuse me, thank you. Good evening Mayor, members of the City Council. The Town Center Plan with a proposal this evening to rename the document to the Lantern District Plan was, as mentioned by the city manager, approved by the City Council in 2006 and then certified by the Coastal Commission in 2008. This parking item before you this evening is the culmination of two years of effort and outreach with the various stakeholders. The meetings are all outlined in the staff report, and you can see that it really demonstrates the city's commitment to public outreach. Important to note that the item before you this evening is an implementation task of the adopted Town Center Plan. So we're simply implementing an item in the Town Center Plan that was always envisioned that needed to occur in order to realize the vision. A number of recommendations to the zoning code and certified local coastal plan are before you this evening for your consideration. Patrick Segman with Nelson Nygaard will give a summary overview of some of the recommendations. We know that you have seen some of this on occasions before, so we will not go into painstaking detail that you've been provided in the past and then will be available to answer any questions.
Good. Well, good evening, and thank you again for giving me the privilege of working on this plan. And it's been a really excellent process over the last couple of years in working together. I think we've done at least, at least 18 meetings so far. And one thing I've really appreciated is the, the stability of the dialogue here, the thoughtfulness of people, and, and also how much effort has gone into, to creating a great plan for the Lantern District. So I will try to move rapidly through these slides. Again, we want to, we want to do this parking plan really to implement the, the vision of, of the Town Center Plan, or it's now proposed to be called the Lantern District Plan, to move from the current pattern of development where you have a wonderful 1920s grid in this wonderful natural setting. But often, there's, there are some vacant lots. There are quite a few surface parking lots that, that break up the, the experience of the pedestrian strolling along, trying to shop. And so the, the goal that we set out to help accomplish in doing this is, we'll see if I can move these slides forward, there we go, is to help implement this vision of the Town Center Plan, that experience for the, the pedestrian, for a family coming to shop and stroll and dine, of being able to walk down and find themselves going past a continuous line of shop fronts with some people living upstairs or offices upstairs, that experience of being in an outdoor room. So I will go briefly through the, the elements outlined here, starting with existing conditions and some of the implementation actions already underway. So existing conditions, just to summarize briefly, out of a little less than 3,000 parking spaces existing in the town center, the surveys taken during the height of the last economic boom found that at the busiest hour of the busiest day, there were approximately 44% of those spaces still sitting vacant. So that was between noon and 1:00 on, on a Thursday, I believe. So there's a lot of empty parking in the town center. And you tend to see these kinds of conditions walking around. So the Community House with a sign saying, "If you park here and go somewhere else nearby to dine, you'll be towed." Or the next-door office building. In, in summary, just a lot of small parking lots on small parcels, generally inefficiently laid out because they're small, often underutilized, and often marked with signs that, you know, warn you that if you go here and then shop next door, you'll, you might be towed. And so we wind up with often spot shortages on just a few blocks, but most with surpluses. The, and there are some existing spillover parking complaints. That is nearby residents saying that they experience shoppers or restaurant patrons or other commercial destination users who are parking in, in their residential neighborhood rather than in the commercial parking intended for them. So the current zoning regulations, in summary, inherited from the county, have given a large overall parking surplus, but it's in these scattered, inefficiently used lots. And so in summary, as the City of San Clemente's Community Development Director said to me a couple of years ago, "We don't have a parking supply problem, we have a parking management problem." And just to give one example of spillover parking, here is the Meridian Building at the corner of Del Prado and Violet Lantern, one of the few mixed-use buildings currently existing. What we see is that at the peak hour, a recent survey found there were 23 of the patrons of that establishment who parked at the curb. There's only 12 curb parking spaces right in front of the building, so that means that 11 are either parked across the street next to the vacant lot, or as we sometimes hear, they're down the street in front of the residences. Yet at the same time, the underground parking garage underneath that building, an elevator ride away from, from the restaurant, is sitting entirely vacant. And so what that means is you have more than 25 underground spaces there. They have a, a value at current construction cost, about $40,000 apiece. So that's $1 million worth of underused parking. So again, we see ample parking quantity and too little parking management. So that while we have plenty of quantity to solve all needs and meet all needs, at the same time, we have some resident spillover complaints. So that in a nutshell is the kind of existing conditions we see. So at council's direction, the city staff has been moving to implement some of the solutions that we recommended, especially some that didn't require any zoning changes or Coastal Commission approval. And one of these is to either purchase or lease existing private lots and add them into the public supply. It's been done in numerous other towns. So of course, the first example that is up and running is the, the new public parking lot in Doheny Village, which is leased there. And then on the council agenda tonight is a lease for the Meridian Building parking in the example I just described. And so what you get is you transform these, this current underutilized supply into something that is much more jointly managed, jointly shared, and treated like the shopping malls you compete with essentially, where you can park anywhere and go to any of the shops. you compete with, essentially, where you can park anywhere and go to any of the shops. And so, for example, specifically here at the Meridian Building, this first level of the garage will become public parking with a three-hour time limit. It will get much better signs as part of a uniform sign package and wayfinding package for the town center. The employees who work there will get permits and be directed to use the underground parking level, the slightly less convenient and definitely harder-to-find parking. And those combination of things should really help solve this particular spillover problem and make this parking more well-used. Then the other thing under development at council direction is a comprehensive package of wayfinding signs for parking in the town center, and of course, to also direct people to important destinations, bicycle and pedestrian routes, and so on. So then that brings us to action items for tonight, and let's start with the non-residential parking requirements proposed. And really, our goal here was to look at the existing code, ask ourselves, what kind of place does that create? Is it appropriate for what you're trying to do in the vision of the town center plan? And then propose appropriate standards that would actually fit. The current code really tends to create a landscape that looks like this. It tends to generate one-story buildings with surface parking that occupy the majority of the land. This happens to be Milpitas, but it could be a place generated just by the Orange County Code. One of the reasons, you might ask, is, well, how come the town center has wound up with so much surplus parking? When you look at how these requirements get created, one thing you see is that since the goal was often to park isolated, single-use buildings, and to make sure that nine out of 10 of those buildings would always have ample parking, the requirements often got established by measuring, say, a couple of dozen similar land uses, like an office park. In the case of these office parks, the average demand was two and a half parking spaces per 1,000 square feet. The highest they ever observed was a little over four, so they set the minimum requirement for offices at four per thousand. That makes sense if you have one office building isolated on its own by a freeway off-ramp. That tends to be very inefficient and leave you with a lot of surplus parking in a kind of mixed-use town center environment. So let me skip past a couple of these. Just one thing I'll mention is the town center plan highlighted this as a problem, and that this pattern of development has really kept you from achieving that critical retail mass, that experience of being able to walk by a block or several blocks of continuous shop fronts. And it's made it quite difficult to build many of the types of buildings envisioned in the plan because of the financial impacts of that. So in order to ask, well, what would be an appropriate mixed-use standard for a city that currently doesn't have a mixed-use standard, we looked at parking demand in many other mixed-use districts, including several coastal communities. In our report, we highlighted about 20 districts. Here, let me just mention a few of the coastal ones on which we have good data. So Newport Beach came in at 1.8 parking spaces occupied per 1,000 square feet of non-residential development. Monterey comes in at 1.2, and this is downtown Monterey. Oxnard at one parking space per 1,000 square feet. Santa Monica at 1.8 parking spaces occupied per 1,000 square feet of non-residential. Then in addition to that review of similar districts, what we also did is we prepared a shared parking analysis and looked specifically at what would be the build-out of the town center plan. Now, of course, we can't anticipate exactly what stores will be here in 10 or 20 years. That's part of the dynamism of a growing district. But what we see is that if, under the assumption that the mix of land uses in the town center in the future will be similar to what it is today, so for example, today it's about 70% of this commercial square footage is restaurant space, we asked, if you scale that up to full build-out of the plan and then put it together in a shared parking environment, what would be the peak? This next slide lets you see it a little bit better. The kind of pattern you see, and I apologize that the colors don't show particularly well, but this bottom line is offices. This line basically shows you going from 6:00 AM to noon to midnight on a typical day. What you see is peak demand occurs around noon, and that's a time when the offices are near full demand, the shops are near full demand, the restaurants, that's this orange line here, they're at their lunchtime high, but they're not at the dinnertime peak. And that winds up being about 2,000 parking spaces occupied. Now, by dinnertime, what actually happens is the restaurants are generating a lot more parking demand, but that shares very nicely because by that time, the office use is most everybody's gone home or gone to dinner next door, and the shop demand is down. And one thing we did here, we made the conservative assumption that there would be absolutely no sharing back and forth between residential and non-residential. So that led us to looking at those different sources of information about what would be an appropriate standard to propose these requirements, which are in the proposed amendments. And just to summarize them, we're proposing that the requirement be two parking spaces per 1,000 square feet of non-residential space, if and only if that is made available to the public as shared parking. Now, if someone wishes to keep it private, they can build according to the ordinary citywide standard. In our experience, in the cities that have gone this route, such as Redwood City and Ventura, basically, just about everyone chooses to go with the option of taking the lower requirement and sharing their parking. Most people who want to come into a town center environment, they recognize that these environments have shared parking. Then, in addition, establishing an in lieu of parking fee at $40,000 per space, so rather than providing all the parking on your own site, you can pay that fee, and then that gives the city funding to create public supply in a better location. And that can often be a really good way of getting both better urban design and also getting more efficiently shared and located parking. So one example, Ventura, which is a plan I worked on about 10 years ago, they are at about 1.3 parking spaces occupied per 1,000 square feet. They had a situation similarly where a lot of their most visible parking was full, but their off-street was underutilized. They actually completely removed minimum parking requirements just on Main Street and the downtown core, and wound up with about seven new restaurants in about six months. But they have gone to two parking spaces per 1,000 square feet, same recommendation, actually. And what they've started to get is this kind of new building. This is a Class A office building. This developer had a very small site, so he built no parking on his own site, rather paid in lieu fees, which helped fund the public parking next door. So then on the residential side, we went to a couple of sources. First, the United States Census is always a good source of information on current household vehicle ownership. And what we see here is citywide in Dana Point, we have about 45% of renters have one vehicle or no vehicle, and about a third of homeowners. And what you see is these folks, of course, tend to be the singles, the single parents, the empty nesters. And actually, these are the same kind of people we'd normally see living in apartments or condominiums upstairs in a town center. And then we also checked the couple of mixed-use residential buildings that exist in downtown, the Meridian Building and Jack's Restaurant. So at the Meridian, these condominiums, which average about 1,500 square feet apiece, we have 30 homes, there are 42 cars parked, that works out to about .9 vehicles per 1,000 square feet of residential space. And then Jack's Restaurant has the apartments behind and upstairs. Those are much smaller, but those are 29 apartments. There were 33 cars parked that were residential, so that's about 1.1 vehicles per apartment. So what we recommend is a requirement of one parking space per 1,000 square feet of residential space. What we find is that that tracks well. When people have, say, a 3,000-square-foot penthouse, they tend to have more cars. Smaller units have smaller cars. We would recommend allowing off-site parking within 300 feet only if you have a conditional use permit. We think that's important for the very small lots that you, and small blocks that you have here in the town center, to accommodate situations like, for example, if someone is building a mixed-use building on one side of the alley in downtown and wishes to park on the lot just across the public alley. And then we recommend allowing tacked, standum, tandem, and valet parking with the approval of the Community Development Director. And by stacked parking, here's an example. This is the Gaia Building in Berkeley, and it's something that you see commonly now in the San Francisco Bay Area. It's stacked parking like this, these actually, there's a pit down below so that you can raise and lower cars independently at the push of a button. We also included bicycle parking standards for both short-term parking and long-term. Short-term is simple racks, long-term is either shelters or a locked garage. And then signage standards. One thing is that in this kind of district, you want most of the signs to be small and pedestrian-scale, but parking is the one thing that you need to find while you're still in your car, and so it's where larger signs are appropriate. And so here, we would recommend allowing signs up to 16 square feet and one sign per frontage, and that would be only for communicating the location of parking. And I think I especially was considering this as I came driving in one night on Pacific Coast Highway, and I'm driving along, and I can see restaurants, but I can't necessarily see much in the way of signage telling me where I can park. Then also, we really propose a belt-and-suspenders approach. So we want to make sure there's ongoing monitoring and evaluation so that you can track how things are going. Once construction is done, you can do another round of parking occupancy counts, and we would recommend that in the plan, we have the standard that if occupancy exceeds 80%, it's now at about 55%, that you would then take action to either increase parking supply or reduce parking demand. So for, well, the example essentially is you want to make sure that you take action before you reach 90%. 90% is when your parking supply is effectively full. So you don't want to get to a situation of being 99% full where you have to search for a long time to find that last available space. And then one other important topic is putting in place parking districts to protect the adjacent residential neighborhoods from spillover parking. And there are really two kinds of parking districts that we're proposing here. One is for the inland side, for the Lantern Village area. On the inland side, we have the advantage that we're out of the coastal zone, and so you can take action without needing to go to the coastal commission for approval. So the goals here would be to make sure we protect the Lantern Village from spillover parking, both now and in the future, to maintain free parking for the Lantern Village residents and their guests, and to establish the specific boundaries and the times and the procedures really only after there's further consultation with all of the residents in that area. And so the example that's in place here currently is for the district around Dana Hills High School, Sea Canyon, not far from here. Of course, there was a spillover parking problem of lots of high school students parking in the neighborhood. My understanding is that's largely resolved because of the preferential parking district. And so one of the items tonight is a proposal to initiate that process of setting up a preferential parking district for that side. Then on the ocean side, the southern side of the Lantern District, we have a situation where we're in the coastal zone, so we still want to accomplish the same goals. We want to protect the Santa Clara neighborhood from excessive spillover parking. We want to continue to maintain free parking for the residents and their guests. But of course, we have to achieve coastal commission approval for this action because it's in the coastal zone, and the coastal commission, we know, has a mission that is, you know, part of their founding mission, to maintain public access, or as they prefer to say, to maximize public access to the coast, and that includes the coastal overlooks. So we've put in place what we think is the best possible solution that meets all of those constraints. And so what we're proposing is that residents and their guests would receive permits for free parking on the street. And then for non-residents, there are a couple of options. One option is to park free in the Lantern District in this shared public parking we're creating. It's an easy two-block walk from there to the coastal overlooks. But actually, we know that many of the non-residents who currently are spilling over into the neighborhood are, they're trying to go to the commercial district anyway. So by providing better solutions within the Lantern District, we're going to solve a lot of that spillover. But then option two is by putting in place a parking benefit district. We can have non-residents charged a small fee to park on the Santa Clara residential streets. What we've found is that the coastal commission has approved this in the past for other neighborhoods in similar situations because it still allows the public to park. We don't think that'll generate very much revenue at all because frankly, since most of these people are going to the Lantern District anyway, they are likely to want to take advantage of the free public parking in the Lantern District. And even those going to the coastal overlooks are much more likely to want to park in the free parking in the Lantern District and walk the two short blocks. But what revenues there are, we would recommend all of that stay in the neighborhood to fund public improvements and services. So that could be better maintenance, better enforcement, street sweeping, whatever frankly the residents think would be a good use is a good start. This proposal doesn't require any actual physical meters on the street. It doesn't require that picket fence. The way, for example, Pasadena does it is that they have one pay station that is located at each neighborhood fire station. That's how they do it. We could put just a couple of pay stations in the district. And then we can also set up a pay-by-phone system. So as you may know, many countries have pretty much moved to pay by phone for paying parking fees almost entirely, and that option is available here and used in many districts as well. So with all of these things, we think what we have is a plan that gives us ample free parking for customers and employees in the Lantern District, a good plan to prevent parking spillover, and to solve some of the small existing spillover problems, both on the coastal side and the inland side of the Lantern District. And then finally, a package of things like wayfinding that just make it much easier for customers and everyone else to show up, find parking, park easily, and feel welcome. And then finally, it's a solution that we think is cost-effective and financially feasible and will really allow you to build the vision of the Lantern District. So, thank you very much.
Before we open it up to questions, I just wanted to reiterate that it really is a package of recommendations, and any one of these things by themselves probably wouldn't work that well. It's the packaging of them together that really makes this program work. And in particular, the 1,000 unused parking spaces at the peak time, those are primarily in exclusive private lots today. And so a really key component to moving this program forward is the conversion of some of those into shared public parking. And so with the approval of the Meridian lease agreement, that's a first step at moving 47 parking spaces as a public parking facility. And the ability to do that makes the parking more efficiently used, along with some of these other recommendations. So with that, we would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schoffel?
Yeah, just a few to start. Thank you very much. It's been a, it's been a long process, and I just have a couple questions here for a few things that have changed. few things that have changed. The, we start with the Meridian building and the surplus parking there and the lease. How long is that contemplated for with options?
The lease agreement is initially a one-year term for both parties to be able to evaluate the effectiveness with two five-year options.
Assuming we get past that.
So, a total of, well, a total of 11 years if both five-year options are exercised.
And the five-year options are exercised mutually?
By the city.
Okay, by the city.
Well, after the first year.
After the, the, the dating period?
Initial trial.
Okay. So, and then, how much is that throughout the life of the lease for 47 spaces?
It's a little over $211,000.
Okay, so, how many of the, of these little, as Patrick puts it, parking fiefdoms? Are there the inefficient surplus parking that's there because of our inefficient and archaic parking standards, and they truly are inefficient and archaic? There's, in my view, there's, there's no question about that. How do we get from 47 to whatever we need to meet the anticipated demand of the projects?
I think it's key to strategically locate those based on where some of the hotspots are. I know one of the lots that we tend to engage with the property owner is over on the northern side of the Lantern District area where the Point Restaurant is located. That's a large, very underutilized parking lot, and there is a couple new restaurants going into that end of the town with existing restaurants, and so, we are in the process of engaging in dialogue with that property owner. The Meridian parking lot provides 47 spaces sort of centrally located, so the next area that really looks to be of an area that the city should take a look at would be over on the end near the Stillwater area where there's a lot of shared uses, office daytime uses with some restaurant uses to be able to effectively have some shared parking.
Okay, so, just to follow that further, if, as the projects come online over, however long it takes the projects to come online, is it going to become more or less difficult to convert the inefficient fiefdoms into shared parking?
I think it becomes, in many ways, it becomes easier. One of the, one of the things that will come along with new development is every, every new development will have essentially two options, well, three options. One option is they build under the old standard and they keep their parking private, in which case, they're certainly going to meet all of their own, own demand and then some. A second would, will be that they build their parking at two per thousand onsite, two parking spaces per 1,000 square feet, and then, they have to make that shared public parking. So, for example, let's suppose that every building in the existing Lantern District completely redeveloped and became a brand-new building, just for the sake of argument. You would wind up at two parking spaces per 1,000 square feet, and all of that would be shared. So, I think that as new buildings come online, we're going to see them coming on, online with that new shared public parking supply.
So, what you're saying is we don't need the fiefdoms as the things connect?
It, yeah, they will.
So, at the end of the, I guess what I'm getting at, Patrick, is at the end of the project, you don't have to continuously rely upon the grace of the sort of surplus parking owners, that if all works the way it's supposed to work together, that all the new projects would ideally pick two per thousand and share with everybody, you know, and sort of Woodstockian, you know?
Yeah, yeah. It's either, it's funny, you can, I think sometimes those values have reappeared in surprising places because it's either, it's either thinking like a regional mall owner does for his parking lot, or it's like, thinking like the Woodstock generation. I'm not sure which it is.
Okay, so, my, and my last, if I may, Mr. Mayor, and just kind of get this discussion started. The monitoring, when you go around to monitor, it's 80% of what at any particular point in time?
What we settled on is proposing 80% of the parking spaces that are available to the public.
So, that's, that's on?
I'm sorry, that we would monitor the, the parking spaces that are available to the public. So, for example, right now, that's all the, all the on-street spaces, and then, the publicly-owned spaces like La Plaza, and then, whatever spaces have been put into this kind of shared, available to the public.
So, I can slightly correct. We will monitor the total supply, but the 80% trigger will be based on shared, shared parking, as Patrick just indicated.
Yeah, that, I, so, but when you're looking at the, sort of the universe of shared parking to which you have to determine whether 80% has been exceeded on whatever measuring day is or monitoring day, maybe there's four of those a year, maybe there's one of those a year, maybe there's 54 of them a year, but you'd go out and you'd, you'd look at available shared parking spaces and determine if you're over 80% to determine whether you have a problem or not. Is that the only type of parking problem that you're looking, looking at? I mean, what if, what if, for example, somebody from Santa Clara came over and said, "You know what? They're just blowing right past our fiefdoms here, and they're coming to park on Santa Clara because it's such a nice street, and they're used to doing that."
Right. I would, I would certainly recommend that when you do the annual parking occupancy counts, that you do a comprehensive survey. When we, when we proposed this monitoring plan and put it in the Lantern District plan, what we were very aware of is that this is one thing that would be going to the Coastal Commission for approval, and that you can only go back to them and, well, you can only change by going back to them for approval. So, what we tried to do is to make it simple and straightforward. Now, there are many other kinds of monitoring, like, for example, spillover into residential areas, that it would be a good idea to, to monitor, but I wouldn't recommend putting that into the plan that you can only change by going to the Coastal Commission because it, it makes it so hard to, you know, just be flexible. The more, the more detail you get into something that you can't change easily, the harder it is to adjust with the times.
Okay, that's all for now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Any other council questions for staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Mayor Proton?
I'm having a hard time understanding the in lieu of parking fee and how that price is set up. Now, currently, it's a $25,000 hard cost, and then, they're figuring another $15,000 for soft cost, engineering, planning, and all that kind of good stuff. Can that price be set higher, or is there, is there some legal mechanism that prevents that amount from, say, maybe 50, 60, 70,000? Is that, because what, concerning me is, you know, we set the fee now, but that parking may not be purchased or developed until later on when those costs are significantly higher, and how do, how do we account for that?
I, one, one detail that I, that I didn't mention, but that is written into the plan, is that we recommend that that fee be reviewed annually by the community development director and adjusted appropriately. What many cities do is either they benchmark the fee, or some cities adjust it every year based on the construction cost index for the local area. So, there's a couple of ways to do it. But my understanding is that legally, indeed, you can set the fee wherever you would like. It's a voluntary option. It's not a mandatory fee you're requiring anybody to, to pay. So, what I, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but my understanding is that because that, because it's that voluntary option, you have much more leeway about setting it where you think it's, it's justified.
Let me just chime in on that for one second. Under the Mitigation Fee Act, the fee itself cannot exceed the actual cost of the parking. So, you have to do studies. So, we have an initial study right now that sets it at 40. So, it can never be more than 40 based on the data we have right now. We could update that study on an ongoing basis, and whatever the actual cost is, we can charge up to that amount, where you have flexibility, which I think is what Patrick's referring to here, is you can set it lower, which is what you have been doing. So, you have a lot of flexibility to not charge the full amount, but you can never charge more than what we've determined the actual cost is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions for staff? Ms. Vixorak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first question involves the bike spaces. I, I know there was a mention that these are package recommendations, but I'm just curious about the rationale for that. Is that intended to create more parking, or people will use their bikes instead of drive, or maybe you can explain to me how the recommendation of the bike spaces requirement fits into the plan?
Sure. It, it's something that, that many of the cities we've worked with have done for a number of reasons. I think one, one good reason is because it, it does help provide better options for people so that they aren't dependent on only driving, and what that can do is both reduce your parking demand, it can reduce your traffic impacts, it can also improve public health. Many cities, for example, say, "We want to improve public health in all of our policies." So, those are a few of the reasons. One other thing I would mention is that the cost of complying with bicycle parking requirements is usually quite low because they just don't take up very much space.
An additional reason is with this type of condo apartment living, sometimes you'll see bicycles stored on balconies, and we wanted to avoid that. We wanted to have places for the bicycles to be stored that were not necessarily visible to the public.
I guess that was my follow-up question. I mean, have you done studies to see? It seems to me if there are, I think it was in the staff report, there are singles that are going to be living there, you know, ostensibly young people that'd be riding their bikes. I mean, have you seen, do they prefer to keep their bikes, simply haul it up to their condo, their apartment? Are they going to be using these bike spaces if we're requiring them to be there?
My, my experience is, is yes, they will, especially the ones that we've required be secure for, for long-term parking. So, for example, the, in order to meet the requirement for long-term bicycle parking, basically, you either have to provide the individual bike lockers, or what I think we're much more likely to see is they'll be inside the locked residential portion of the garage, the gated. When I was doing the parking counts at the Meridian building, one thing I noticed is that they've converted a couple of underused car parking spaces into bicycle parking, and there are a lot of bikes parked in there. I find that, you know, if somebody has a $10,000 racing bike, they'll, they'll probably hang it up in their, in their living room, partly just to show off, but, but, for example, trying to, trying to bring one of those 100-pound electric bikes, or, well, maybe they're 50-pound electric bikes that they sell at the great store downtown, up into your apartment, that usually doesn't, doesn't work that well. So, I think they'll be well-used.
Okay, I'll turn to my other question. It has to do really with the, the flexibility of the plan that we're talking about. You know, basically, if we're being asked to amend the code here, you know, we don't want to have to come back and continually amend it, so I'm hoping that the plan will be flexible enough to address things in the future, and one of the, one of the thoughts that comes to mind, I'll let you comment on this, is we're talking about continuous storefronts. If we have, do we have certain lots that are adjacent to the street now that we expect to, to lease? And if so, how does that fit into the plan, and if there's future development? Do you understand my question? Okay.
Yes, one of the situations that our neighbor to the south, San Clemente, experienced on the lease agreements is that the property owners typically don't want to encumber their properties with a long-term lease agreement because they want the flexibility to redevelop the property. So, in that case, if we were to lease one of those lots where we would really prefer to see continuous storefront, there would be an ability to get out of the lease agreement, and then, the new project that would get developed would be built at the, the two per thousand if that's how they opt to go and share the parking. So, there, that flexibility is in there, and it would be, we would be constantly, I mean, the Meridian building, one of the great things about it is that it's already an existing mixed-use building. The probability of it redeveloping in the future is pretty low, and so, in that particular case, if, after the dating period goes and both parties agree that it's a good situation, that is, two, five-year options is longer term than what San Clemente's achieved on their lease agreements. But again, that's probably not likely to redevelop.
But even during that, that subsequent five- or 10-year period, that, is there something in the lease that allows either side to withdraw, or is that how we're writing the lease so that they could then develop their property?
Not, not in that case. In that case, they were willing to commit to five-year terms.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Mueller?
I have a question about the, the lease at Meridian and the overall cost of the term, 11 years, for, I think you said $211,000. Have we explored some of the other empty parcels in town to, to either purchase or lease the land and then, and then improve it and create a public parking space there? And if we have, well, what's the cost of that?
We have, but first, I want to pull my staff report for that item on the Meridian. Sorry. Because I wanted to break it down on a cost-per-space basis, which is in the fiscal impact section, and it ends up being $4,500 per space on that. The city had looked...
Is that, is that per year, or is that for the life of?
That's over, that's over an 11, an 11-year period, so if both options were exercised. The city had been looking at a vacant lot in the Lantern District area, and based on the lease terms that the property owner wanted for 10 years and the amount that they wanted, and our improvement costs to create surface-level parking, that came to almost $22,000 per space for 10 years. And then, the city back in 2010 had looked at some various options in surface parking, and there was a cost estimate for 48 parking spaces, and this was to acquire the land, so it had a purchase price of $2.25 million with the improvements, and that came to $63,000 per space. Of course, that would be for a longer period than 10 years because you'd own the land.
Thank you. One, one other question, it's kind of a piggyback on Councilmember Vixorak. So, say we are under a lease with one of these lots, and at the end of that term, they decide they're going to redevelop the, the property, and even at the two per thousand, that reduces the number of spaces that they're going to be required to provide. What, how do we address the loss of spaces after they redevelop?
I, I think one of the easiest ways for me to, to think it through is, I think, all right, what if, what if every building in the Lantern District redevelops, and we wind up with two parking spaces per 1,000 square feet? Will that be ample parking? And the experience I've seen from all of these other mixed-use districts is that, yes, that turns out to be plenty. It turns out to work well. There are very few outliers, but in the 20 districts that, on which I have good data that are, that are comparable, the typical demand is between 1.6 and 1.9 parking spaces occupied per 1,000 square feet at the peak hour. So, I'm, I'm pretty darn certain that if we look 20 years down the road and you have a substantial number of new buildings, that what you'll have is those new buildings will come with two parking spaces per 1,000 square feet, it'll be well-shared, and what you'll find is that that's sufficient to, to handle the, the needs of the district. And the key to that is really going to be managing it well and making sure it's shared well.
My last question, it's kind of like Mr. Vixorak's again. Is our plan flexible enough that if we determine, say, in five years the development started, that two per thousand isn't enough, or it's too much? Let's say it's, it may be too much. That can, that's a problem as well. Are we flexible enough with our plan that we can change these requirements without having to go back to the Coastal Commission?
Let's see. There, there are some things clearly that would be an amendment that you have to go back to the Coastal Commission for. So, for, for example, if you want to change the essential, the requirements, the standard of, you know, one per thousand or two per thousand, that, that will go back to the Coastal Commission under, under current laws. But we've tried to build in a lot of flexibility in that there's the in lieu of parking fee option, there's the fact that since it's one requirement for all non-residential uses, that allows you, for example, to change an existing use from, say, a... that allows you, for example, to change an existing use from, say, a restaurant space to a gym, to a store. You know, there's a lot of flexibility to change uses. And actually, you get rid of a lot of the staff time that goes into processing these fairly routine changes. The, but essentially, you do have to go back to the Coastal Commission if you wind up saying, "Well, we want to change the basic requirements."
So basically, our flexibility comes with, we no longer have a land use associated with the parking requirement. It's based on, purely based on square footage of the building.
Yeah.
And anytime we want to change the parking requirement, we would have to go back to Coastal Commission to do that. Either up or down, whichever direction it needs to go. Okay. Thank you.
We've given the development community several options on how they can comply with the requirements that the Coastal Commission has to bless. And so we have flexibility there. And we've tried to address some of the practical glitches, so to speak, to where you don't have to keep going back for approvals just because you changed from one use to another, because all commercial uses are the same. But once you set the rules, whatever the rules are, are subject to Coastal Commission approval.
Quick question, and this may be for Mr. Munoz. So let's say we do approve this plan as it is tonight, but I don't know if we will or we won't. But say we do. Do we have a vehicle to go back to the current property owners that have the current parking requirement? And ask them if they would be willing to turn those over into public lots today to get, to have the benefit of the two per thousand? Do we have a vehicle for that? To turn that all into public parking?
As a practical matter, yes. I mean, it's not spelled out quite the way you describe it. But you get there the same way we got there with the Huff Meridian property. You know, the short version is that they had a use that came in that needed shared parking in order to be able to meet their parking requirements under our existing codes. By entering into this lease that you approved earlier this evening, one of the things that we've ensured is that the shared parking is now sort of locked in. The city has some control over that to ensure that it will continue on so that as different uses come into that site, while we're waiting for the Coastal Commission approval, they can all take advantage of this shared parking that agrees for that site and won't have to keep going back through and doing parking studies and getting new parking approvals. Is that, I mean, that's essentially correct, right? Or so I got that right?
Yes.
I'm not talking about in the interim. I'm talking about, once we approve this, if we approve this, and it's approved by Coastal Commission, we still have all these little parking fiefdoms out there. And we may need them. And it may be in their best interest to say, "I want to take advantage of removing my land use in return for you taking over our lot as public lot." Do we have a vehicle to do that, after it's been approved by the Coastal Commission?
So once this has been codified, and which means it's had Coastal Commission certification, then it's the new standard. So every property owner in the Lantern District, every property in the Lantern District, the new parking standard will be two per thousand. So they will get that benefit at that time without us doing anything.
No, my question is, it's a private lot today, and they have a land use associated with the building. So if they want to change the use of the building, it's still a private lot, could we at that point go to them and say, "You're going to change your land use. You may or may not have enough parking. If you make it a public lot, the land use restriction comes off." A current building, not something that they're going to redevelop. A current building.
But the new business going in will be able to be parked at the two per thousand?
That's what I'm asking. And then we could go to them without any cost to the city and say, if you turn the-
The answer to your question is yes. And that's how this will work out as a practical matter.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Schoeffel?
Just briefly, and then maybe we can get on and listen to the public. Who pays for all this?
Well, for new buildings, what you see is that the new building owner coming in will have to build at two parking spaces per thousand square feet and make it available to the public. And so the developer pays for that. For change of uses in existing buildings-
If I can just interrupt for a second. The developer pays for the onsite parking, right? To hit the two per thousand. Doesn't have to pay for the curb parking, to the extent there's any curb parking in front of the building. Because I understand there's a credit that's supposed to be allowed towards the two per thousand. Is that, or do I have that wrong?
If you, you can count the curb parking spaces adjacent to your building toward the requirement, yes.
Okay. And so the public parking that was built by the city and it's sitting next to the building, they get a credit for that, although they've done nothing to put that in. And I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to, so if I have three spaces next to my lot, and I have to have, say, 10 to be two per thousand, I can take those three without paying an in-lue fee?
They would remain public parking spaces?
Right.
So just to be clear, they would, all of the-
I understand.
Yeah. All the public parking spaces would remain public and under public control. But what we looked at and set in the requirement, we said, "Okay, the overall goal is to make sure we have ample free parking in the district for all the customers. What, how much parking do we need to get to that?" What we found, based on the data, is, well, we need two parking spaces per thousand, including both the on-street and off-street supply. That's what we saw in other districts. And as we looked at it, we said, "Well, let's see. The only reason you have curb parking in the Lantern District is to serve the properties that are there." I mean, that's basically its purpose. The property owners pay their property taxes. So, you know, what are we going to do with that curb parking? Well, we're going to use it to serve the people who come to the Lantern District. So we included it in. The supply counted toward meeting the requirements.
Okay. So when you decided that the two per thousand was adequate, that included all the curb parking that was next to the, whatever lot it happened to be in front of. So you get, so that's why it's proposed, you get the credit for that. So is, are these strategic acquisitions of the fiefdoms, as Ursula described, paid for entirely out of the in-lue fees? Where else does the money come from?
So, at present, yes.
Okay. So we would take, and let's say the next, let's say the guy at Violent Lantern in Del Prado says, "Eureka. I found the money. I can do my project now, two and a half years later, you know, three years later, five years later, whenever it is." Presumably, there'll be an in-lue component for the parking there. I'm guessing. I don't know either way. You would take that and apply it towards the strategic acquisition of these little parking lots throughout the Lantern District. And what if that wasn't enough? Where would, what if you didn't have enough in that in-lue fund? Because people got a little better with their negotiations than, say, Meridian was.
Yeah. What I think we're going to see is relatively limited use of the in-lue parking fee. Because one of the things about an in-lue parking fee is that you pay it. You don't actually wind up owning a physical parking space that's on your own property. So we-
But you're buying shared parking with the in-lue fee, is what I thought I heard you say.
We, yeah. When, in order to create, purchase land and get shared public parking there, certainly in-lue fees can be a source of that. But if you have new development coming in and providing parking at two spaces per thousand square feet, we're going to wind up with a lot of new shared public parking that is basically associated with the new development.
But until we get to that state of grace, where the projects start flowing in, like Niagara Falls, and we all hope that happens, there have to be, as Ursula put it, strategic acquisitions of these little fiefdoms to accommodate the two per thousand or, you know, whatever the relative factor is on the residential. That's got to be paid for by something.
It would come out of the general fund.
It is-
It just comes from the general fund. If there's a shortfall from the in-lue fees for the council to approve us entering into a lease for any, you know, parking, you have to identify the source. And primarily, the source is going to be the general fund. It might come out of capital improvement budgets. But, you know, we'll identify the source as each project comes forward. If there's enough, we are required to use the in-lue parking fees for parking-related issues. So that will be the first source that we would look to naturally.
That was actually my question. To the extent there's a shortfall, that shortfall is to be borne by the city?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's, that was my question. I'm sorry it took so long to get it out.
And when, I mean, one thing I should mention is, we only, in the current situation, the existing businesses and activities in the town center have ample parking. I mean, it's not as efficient as we'd like, but there's certainly plenty of it. And it's there. So if there's no new development that either generates its own shared parking or generates in-lue fees, we don't have a lot of need to go out and, you know, create in-lue parking. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Potam?
Just a follow-up question on in-lue parking. I've heard two figures, $40,000 for a 10-year lease, I'm assuming, and then $75,000 for outright purchase and development. Is that what I'm hearing?
The $40,000 is our proposed in-lue fee tonight. That's being recommended. The 70, I think it was actually $63,000, that was information that Public Works put together back in 2010. And that was the estimated cost to purchase a lot at $2.25 million. And based on the assumed construction cost to improve that as surface-level parking, that came to $63,000 per space.
So our calculations are based on a 10-year lease for the $40,000. That's what we're basing the calculation, the $40,000 on?
No.
No. I would say that that one figure for acquiring a surface lot and converting it to parking, that's a higher, much higher figure than I've seen typically. Yeah. I mean, that's, one of the, I mean, one of the reasons that people build structured parking is because essentially, it's a way of getting land freed up that is cheaper than simply, you know, taking surface land and paving it for parking. The land values are high enough in the town center to support the construction of structured and underground parking. So $40,000 per space should be adequate, based on the cost we've seen in similar coastal communities, to do structured parking.
So to go over the numbers we've talked about, on a lease basis, using the actual numbers we have at Huff Meridian, for 10 years, 11 years, rather, just using an easy number, using 10 years, okay, at $40 a space, which is the higher number that doesn't kick in until years seven through 11, but just use the higher number. If it's $40 a space, times per month, that's times 10, times another 10 years, that's $4,800. I'm just kind of rounding this off. So that's $4,800 per space if we use funds to lease these spaces that we know are out there that we'd like to take advantage of. To build parking, we're looking at, from the studies we've done, about $40,000 per space to build it and own it. So, I mean, as, for instance, the item that you already approved, part of the staff recommendation for doing that was because it was such an efficient use of money to come up with all those public parking spaces, rather than going out and buying raw land and improving it at $40,000 per space for, you know, 40 spaces, do the math on that. We could rent spaces for, you know, $4,800 a space for 10-year period. And, you know, of course, then the hope is, from the planning, you know, that you're hearing about tonight, is that in the course of the next 10 years, through the way all these components fit together, we'll have enough development, hopefully, that other people will jump on the bandwagon, take advantage of the more preferential rules that apply to development if you make your spaces public. And we'll have lots more public spaces. So we will limit the amount of spaces we have to actually spend our money on to go out and acquire.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Then we'll move on to public comments. I'll open up the public comments section, and we'll start off with Betty Hill, followed by Buck Hill. Please state your name and place of residence.
Hello, I'm Betty, I'm Betty Hill, and I live in Capistrano Beach. And I think I've given you a summary of what I want to go over real quickly. The main thing is, the real issue tonight is the town center plan and making it happen. And the 2015 Town Center Initiative fully supports the plan and the intent and the requirements. So, but these are my major concerns about this parking proposal. Dana Point is currently a suburban, auto-oriented environment, where most residents and visitors will be using their cars to access town center. And what they want to know, where is the parking? It's sort of out there, and you're kind of talking about it, but we want to know where it is. This is a major concern for residents and businesses. Our initiative group has talked to thousands of residents recently. Traffic and parking are their major concerns. Now, I like the concept of leasing parking areas, but they have to be in convenient locations with long-term leasing options. Or where we have studied the costs of various long-term solutions. San Clemente is facing a very difficult problem right now with their parking. It has not worked out. They don't have any long-term solutions on board. Laguna Beach, Newport are facing similar problems. So what are the real leasing terms? I don't think we're right on that Meridian proposal. I believe it's different from what has been expressed here. So what properties are currently available for leasing? Will they be available in the future? What is the financial plan that the city has to pay for them? Purchasing lots may cost more, but that's more of an investment. You lose control of options. Prices go up. There may be a shortage of those lots in the future. The monitoring program is extremely complicated. What are its costs? It shows a kind of a lack of assurance that the city's parking strategy will be successful. We don't want another rolling-the-dice issue that has come up before. Eliminating the parking requirements to encourage economic development, per the referenced article, is very interesting, actually. It's a process where a city or a developer incorporates ways to compensate for their parking change, such as a developer negotiating for spaces in a parking structure, rather than providing them themselves. So, you know, one thing that came to mind, since you're saying that if they don't make these spaces public, they will go back to the existing zoning, well, why don't we just leave that zoning in place? And let the, rather than the city be responsible, let each developer propose an acceptable parking solution using some of these vehicles, some of these options that you're discussing, such as valet service, shared parking, what is the project's anticipated use, allowance for employing parking, et cetera. Developers need to bear the cost of providing parking for their own projects. To me, that's a simpler way of solving that. The town center is called a mixed-use area, but in actuality, the town center plan promotes a business district that allows residential uses. It states that commercial use is preferred on the upper stories. So the residential zoning reductions are unjustified. They'll promote overflow parking. The public will not be allowed to use those residential places, spaces, but the residents will probably be parking once in the public spaces. Those are my feelings on this. Thank you.
Buck Hill, followed by Gary Newkirk.
Hi. Buck Hill from Capo Beach. You've heard from me often. There's a fantastic gulf between what the staff and the council seem to feel is a great approach and what the residents feel is a great approach. Betty and I have talked and gotten signatures from about 1,600 people so far. There definitely will be that measure on the ballot soon. And the residents feel like it's crazy to not have parking, that that's the key to success in town center. If you're going to have successful businesses, this environment we all want to enjoy, people have to be able to park conveniently, and that's the only way those restaurants and retailers can succeed. So by choking it down to this two per thousand, we're going to have big problems. And I ask myself, why is there such a gulf between, these people, 95% of them sign the initiative as soon as we ask them to, as we explain it. And they do it out of their own experience. Yet all of you think this is the greatest idea ever. So I ask myself, how can there be this space? Part of it is misinformation. Like Ursula just told you, that this is a solid 11-year lease after that first-year trial period. Read it. It says either party can cancel in 60 days, anytime during the next 10 years. So right now, when there's plenty of parking and there's no other use for it, you can buy it cheap. Well, all the guy at Meridian has to do is say, "Hey, you see, you've squeezed and 90% or whatever?" That price is going up. I've got some- I've got some examples. Why else do you have a different opinion? Nelson Nygaard. This firm is making a living telling cities they don't need any parking. So that, that consulting agreement with Newport, Newport found that they had ninety-six percent occupancy of parking spaces around that Balboa Peninsula area. And they said, you don't have a parking problem, you have a parking management problem. What's the solution? Take the rate from two dollars an hour now to four dollars, and you won't have a parking problem. Now, is that management? Boy, the retailers are going to love that. Okay. Santa Monica. New parking plan threatens Santa Monica. I've just left you these articles. A consultant hired by the city to prepare the plan, part of a much broader update to zoning and so on and so on. The solution to Santa Monica's parking problems is to not build more parking, consultant Jeffrey Toomlin said, but to make better use of spaces that already exist. Guess who Toomlin works for? Nelson Nygaard. The more parking we supply, the more that is created, the more traffic that's created. It's important not to provide too much parking. Not only are the residents skeptical that this will work, but it's also a belief, it's just a boon to developers who can make more profits because they don't have to provide this parking. That's a one story. Another one, here's a picture. There's an app in Santa Monica being used where people sell the parking spaces they're currently in. So if you're about to leave, you say, hey, this parking space is available, for ten dollars, I'll wait till you come, and you can drive in when I drive out. This is metered parking even. They pass, they are considering a resolution, and you guys better think of one, too, to outlaw selling your parking space. This is very interesting stuff. I think you guys have been badly misinformed.
Please close. Thank you. Next is Stephen Lamott. Oh, I'm sorry. Gary Newkirk, followed by Stephen Lamott.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members. Gary Newkirk, eighteen-year resident of Dana Point. I'd like to address a specific item that's in the parking, non-residential land use parking requirements, specifically, the provision to count on-street parking located along the frontage of a project site towards the fulfillment of parking requirements for that site. That's from the page five. Brad and the Public Works did a survey this year of what our available inventory parking is. We have five hundred and sixty spaces that are not in La Plaza, that are in the town center on the street. That's our inventory of, of public street parking. This sentence effectively gives all of those away. Every one of those spots, if I'm a developer and I have a credit of five spots, I'm not going to build them. I'm going to save that money, I'm going to take the credit for the on-street spots. The next provision right below it says establishing an in lieu fee to allow parking requirements for non-residential users to be satisfied by a payment of an in lieu fee for each private parking space not provided, for forty thousand dollars. Well, if they're not building them, and they're on the street, that's an in lieu parking spot, regardless of what we call it. The difference with the, the credit is that we are subsidizing each of those values to the developer. Five hundred and sixty spots, forty thousand dollars a spot, is twenty-two point four million dollars of parking spaces. If a developer chooses to not build their space and buys those spots at forty thousand, that's a great reserve fund that we have to go out and secure leases, to maintain leases, to make an investment in a property to build a lot. If everybody takes those spots, what do we have to sell? What can we sell as an in lieu spot if we've given them all away? Another issue is that that only accounts for the, in, in this description, the spaces that are on the street. If I have a lot on Del Prado with five spots, and John has a spot on PCH that happens to have traffic routed, so there are no spots, should he get a credit for five spots? I have them, you don't, the city chose to make the street the way it is. So in theory, it could be a much bigger exposure, depending on how we decide to handle that. And is it really proper to discriminate against a landowner that happens to have a lot that has no spaces in front of it? I, I think this is a really problematic area. I think that twenty-two million dollars would be a great reserve fund for the city, and could go a long way to, to solving and dealing with these problems as we move forward. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Newkirk. Stephen Lamott, followed by Dana Yager.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor. Council members. My name is Steve Lamott. I am the Government Affairs Director for the BIA, the Building Industry Association of Orange County. I'm here tonight to show our support for the city staff's recommendation in regards to the proposed parking amendments they have discussed here tonight. By way of background, we're a nonprofit trade association representing over one thousand member companies, as well as over one hundred thousand members in the building industry doing business here in Orange County. With regard to the town center plan tonight, we have been an active stakeholder for several years. We at the BIA are looking forward to the continued implementation of this town center plan, and are excited about the wonderful opportunity to enhance the downtown center and the walkability here. In listening to staff reports, in staff's presentation tonight pertaining to the proposed plan, we believe these types of changes are a positive step to help incentivize businesses to locate here in Dana Point. Overly conservative parking requirements are one of the biggest constraints to achieving the revitalization of downtown areas. This proposal for a more modern parking approach is consistent with the underlying planning and principles of the town center plan, which emphasizes a mixed-use pedestrian-friendly environment. Further, we'd like to remind the council the staff's recommendation is based off technical studies, and that we hope and encourage that you trust the tech, technical experts and allow for the most efficient land use down here in the town center plan. Thank you for the opportunity to share my concerns here tonight, and, and I thank you.
Thank you very much. Dana Yager, followed by Cindy Fleming.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmen, staff, especially want to show my appreciation to all of you, what you do is very informative to me, and I think to everybody. I happen to be a resident on Dana Point, a business owner on Dana Point, and a property, I'm sorry, on Del Prado, and a property owner in Del Prado. So all these things affect me directly. And being an existing building, I really appreciate what Joseph said, is asking about, how does it affect me? And I appreciate what the city manager said in the opening remarks, to have this be a civil dialogue, and it's a process. And I hope just to add a couple of elements of what I call a reality, for my reality for this, and my experience. I did turn in two pages, and it's too long to read. I'm going excerpt and respond to a couple of items. One, we have, we have a parking problem. We are one of those fiefdoms that between ourselves and Dr. Thien next door, there are already arguments over our own overflow parking in our own lot. We have eighteen stalls under the old code, we actually have an extra, and with the eight, six employees in one office that holds two thousand people, if we would change, if we would elect this option of going to two per thousand, it actually downgrades the value of my building, because I have to have, tell the new tenant wants to come in, an office, and say, they want to have employees, and say, where are we going to park? And I say, I don't know. Go down the block, go to the Meridian building. We don't have a plan. To me, as being a former engineer, I look at it, try to find the simplest problem, we need a parking structure. How will we get through this in the next one year, five years, ten years, whatever it is, or build it and they will come? We need a parking structure. So all these ideas of, of renting land and developing properties, I don't see it happening. We need to have, I, we need every, following what Mr. Newkirk just said, as a merchant, I need the street reserved for customers. As a commercial vendor, I need the street reserved for patients and clients. All that, that's, that's what it is. If we can't have that, we really, we really need the structure. So whatever this thing is happening tonight, and I appreciate all the information, it's educated me a lot, I will point out, the type of employees that we want to have are probably not going to take a bus. So the idea of it being congested, and there's no place to park, and that one of the solutions is, we'll use mass transit, and the customers that I want from my art gallery, or even the customer, customers that might go to Bevmo are not going to be taking a bus to carry, you know, a bunch of liquor back home. So what I look forward, and hope you guys do, is continuous deliberation, grind down to the point that you're getting to, get these numbers, get the finances right, and in either postpone it, or let's find a way to build a structure. And we are, as a property owner, willing to pay our fair share and support that effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yager. Cindy Fleming, followed by Peggy Tabus. Please state your name and place of residence.
Good evening, Council members and staff. I'm Cindy Fleming, live at the corner of Santa Clara and Ruby Lantern, and I also have a business here in town. My husband and I have lived in Dana Point for thirty years now. The Lantern District improvements are looking great. We wholeheartedly support the Lantern District Plan, and we agree that parking reductions from the current standards are appropriate for mixed-use with shared parking, per the proposed plan, with one exception, and that is restaurants. We love our restaurants. Restaurants are a vital part of a, you know, a healthy downtown mixed-use area. They need to have parking. Right now, there isn't a resident around that's near the downtown area, that is near a restaurant, that won't tell you that there is a parking problem with overflow parking into the residential areas specifically from restaurants. And so I would encourage you to look at the parking standards proposed, and make that a caveat. Make sure that we've got enough parking for the restaurants. The other thing is that most mixed-use parking districts, when they put together their parking plan, they provide for protection of the residential areas adjacent those districts. Tonight, we're talking about adopting a, some proposed options, and we have to encourage that, that you accept those. Again, I, I just encourage you to not reduce the parking ratios when it comes to the restaurants. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Peggy Tabus?
Good evening, Council, Mayor. I'm here today, Peggy Tabus, from City of Newport Beach. I'm here tonight as Majestic Housing and Development. We own the two point two acres that has been approved recently. We now call Marina View, and was approved in October under the current parking standards. We wholeheartedly support the new plan that is promoted tonight. We think that it will go a long way to stimulating further development activity in the downtown, much needed. I did want to show, share with you, for point of reference, the kind of parking standards that we have in our project now. Unfortunately, under the current plan, we have four spaces per thousand, and, and we are required to have that parking public. So not only is our non-residential twice what you're proposing tonight, it is also public. So, and we didn't get the discount, we got no credit for curb parking whatsoever. No, it is true. And we, those, that extra parking that we are providing came at a significant cost and a significant impact to our project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, I'll, any other late, that will, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for any questions and debate, and we'll talk about item nineteen.
Mr. Mayor?
Protem?
I have a couple of concerns that I've heard tonight, and I think that the in lieu parking fee for curb, curb parking, whether you have it in front of your building or not, maybe it's possible to apply that in lieu of fee to curb parking to the project, instead of giving it as a credit for the project, they'd have to pay, the developer would have to pay for that. I'm also concerned about the number of parking spaces for residential. It's, it's currently set at one per thousand, and having some experience in the multifamily business, I think that's a little, little, it's a little low. I think that it should be higher, maybe, maybe double that, because usually your one-bedroom apartment's somewhere between five and six hundred and fifty square feet. So under this plan, this thousand per, one parking space per thousand feet, square feet, you couldn't get two, you'd have only one car for two apartments, so I think that's a bit, bit low, in my opinion. And that's all the comments I have right now.
Thank you. The questions asked by the council, I thought, was a very good exchange of ideas, and then the public comes across with some very good worst-case scenarios. So I think we're seeing a lot of more information that's needed, so I hope we, we can come to some sort of resolution. But are there any more councilmen that want to ask? Mr. Shuffel?
First of all, on the one per thousand, Patrick, you're as good a person to answer this as anybody. Do these people, are, are they antisocial? Do they have guests? You know, they, we're very, very friendly here in Dana Point.
You know, I, I tell you.
And when you live in a beach town, Patrick, people come to visit you.
I live in a, I live in a beach town myself, you know? I, I go out in the morning sometimes, and I, and I'm waiting to, I'm waiting to take the train downtown to go to work, and the surfers are getting on the train in the other direction, going out to Ocean Beach. So the...
So where do the guests park?
So the, where do the guests park? The, one of the nice things about a town center is that at night, you have a few hundred residential units that, that build out of this plan, and you have a very large quantity of non-residential space, office, restaurant. And if you look at, for example, the Meridian Building and the apartment at Jack's Restaurants are two existing examples. What you see there is, for example, the, the Meridian Building, the existing residential parking supply is more than ample for the, the residents. But in addition, there's about eighty commercial spaces that are unused in the evening and overnight. So that provides a large supply for, for guests, if somebody were to throw a big party. So basically, what we see is, there's a lot of, of parking there for, for guests. And, and the standard we've set is designed basically to accommodate your, your routine occupants and their residential guests.
Okay. So that's at night. How about guests who aren't particularly nocturnal? They come during the day.
Yeah.
They visit during the, I have guests during the day.
No, 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 no. Makes, makes total sense. So when you're, when you're, when you're looking at that situation, the, the standard of one space per thousand for residential units, you can accommodate a, a fair amount of guest parking within that standard. And then what we have in addition, of course, is the regular commercial area parking, and that can accommodate a situation where, let's say, somebody has a big birthday party during the day. One thing I would say is, this is the kind of thing that works, because you don't have all of these uses hitting their peak at the same time, and you have a parking supply that's shared among a lot of uses.
So if I lived in, say, just, I'm just going to take Majestic, for example, since they're entitled. I lived there, and I had the, the one space, and you were going to come to my birthday party, I'd say, Patrick, you drive down Del Prado and then park three blocks away in the commercial parking lot, you'll find it easily with the wayfinding, and, and then just follow your GPS till you hit my, now, I'm exaggerating this a little bit to, to, to make a point, but, but I'm agreeing with the Mayor Protem, that one seems a little, maybe a lot skinny on the residential side. You're, you tell me, you tell us, however, that, that when you take the one, you combine it with the two that are shared, you know, things, all the dominoes fall at the right time, and the city has enough money to pay for that, that it all works out. I'm just trying to figure out how that works.
Yeah.
To figure out whether that really, really is a meaningful and acceptable parking ratio standard.
Yeah. And I think when we, when we look at the, the amount of parking that is coming along with new projects, that combination of both the residential and the non-residential requirements, that that works out over time to provide you with ample parking. I mean, what we really, what we really see is, the Meridian Building as is, works well. It is, you know, certainly existing, well-taken-care-of condominium places. These are about fifteen hundred square feet apiece. I think we have thirty homes there with forty-two parking spaces at the peak hour for the residential. It comes in at about... It comes in at about .9 spaces occupied, a thousand square feet of residential use. You know, certainly, it would be great if we had several more existing residential examples that we could draw on besides the Jacks and the Meridian. But both here and in other similar mixed-use districts, we've seen this standard works well. Certainly, if you get, you know, a few years down the road, and you find the standard needs some adjustment, you can go back and do that. But we, I mean, what we're balancing here is, how do we get enough parking to make the town center work well, and on the other hand, not overbuild to the point where nothing happens?
Okay, so that leads me to my, I think, my last question. Let's say we're successful with our strategic acquisition of these fiefdoms along the way, because it's going to start slow, right? I mean, it started slow. There's not, the pace is a little sluggish right now. Would you admit that's the case? It's always sluggish at the beginning. And so we have forty-seven spaces, assuming the dating goes well, and, you know, a year from now, we go the next five years, and maybe the next five years after that. If the projects come in, and we are not able to keep pace with acquisition of the surface parking, so that we can meet whatever standard it is that we agree is the appropriate standard here, and I think that there's still some, you know, a little discomfort with that, how do you solve that problem?
I think the solution we've devised...
So in other words, you go out, and just mechanically, you go out and you do a monitoring, whatever, you know, on monitoring day, and you said, well, now we're at eighty-two percent, or we're at eighty percent, or we're at seventy-nine percent. We got to do something. How do you solve that problem?
One of the nice things about the plan we put together is that it matches the pace of development with solutions to it. So for example, if you have no development applications coming in, then you basically have no change in the current parking situation. You have really no urgent need to go out and start acquiring shared public parking. On the other hand, if you do get a lot of projects coming in, then they either need to build, or they need to pay their fees. If you have a lot of projects that come in and pay their fees, well, then there's your income stream for picking up the shared public parking to handle them.
Okay, so, but how do we know that that shared public parking is going to be available at an affordable price to support the project?
Certainly, we don't have a crystal ball to know what land prices will be, you know, ten, twenty...
Or willingness of the people to commit the property to that use. I mean, that's also another part of it. And I'm not trying to naysay the whole thing, I'm just saying, there's sort of a delicate, you know, catch and, you know, run and catch here.
Well, it's, if we look at the individual examples that have come forward so far, what we see is that when somebody actually wants to bring in a new business or start a new activity, for example, the Meridian Building, what made them say, oh, yeah, I want to enter into this lease deal, I want to do it on terms that are favorable to the city and that work for them, is that they had a change of use that they wanted to do. They wanted to bring in a new business. So that then is the catalyst that gets you the parking, and they're incentivized to do the lease on very favorable terms for the city because they want to get permission to do the change of use. So that gives the city a lot of leverage for these changes of use. And then with new buildings, it's similar. If you're building a brand-new building, basically, you need to build your supply or pay hefty fees. One last thing I'll say is that we have very intentionally said in the plan that the in-lu fee should be reviewed and adjusted annually every year, because, of course, you want to be able to keep up with changes in construction costs, land costs, all those things.
See, my concern is the supply, the available supply, because we have a Lantern District where there's been, the mantra is, there's been twelve empty lots forever. There's empty lots there today. There's empty lots, you know, pecked, you know, all around the place, and maybe the most generous offer isn't going to get people to cut that stuff loose for, you know, for parking spaces. They just like it, you know, the way it is. And I'm trying to figure out what happens when we get to that point, and we have more projects coming in, and we have to adjust the standard, but now we've got the whole first part of our project on another standard. We can't go back and increase their standard. We can't go back and ask them for more in-lu fees. I'm trying to figure out how, and we actually kind of discussed this during our study session on this.
Yeah.
So how do we deal with that?
Right, right. And there's an important balancing act here. Essentially, when we look at the experience of other communities, at those other twenty or so districts on which we have good data, what we see is that the vast majority of them come in under two parking spaces per thousand square feet occupied. Most of them are in the 1.6 to 1.9 range. The three that we observed that were above two parking spaces occupied per thousand, those are places that are really booming. So the good news for them is they're generating an awful lot of money and revenue to help solve parking issues. So if, in setting these rates, what we've said is, okay, let's set the rate at where we think is very, very likely to be adequate for the long term, for the next thirty, forty years. Yeah, there's some chance you go over. The disadvantage with setting it higher, I think, is twofold. You know, one is that minimum parking requirement, the cost is initially paid for by the developer, but then, of course, that cost gets passed on and eventually shows up as higher rents and just higher prices for all the goods and services you purchase. Ultimately, the customer pays for it. So as you go higher and higher, both those costs get passed along, and then also, you reach a point where you get very little or no new development when the fees get too high.
But you understand if the fees don't get to a certain level, then the city and the taxpayers have to pick up that amount, right? I mean, isn't that what I'm hearing here tonight? Patrick tells me that the in-lu fees don't cover it.
No, certainly.
I got to go to the general fund.
When...
Is that what you said?
Ah.
No, I said that you look to budget sources, which includes the money that comes in from all the taxpayers. I mean, it's, you know, it's not as black and white as you're presenting it there.
Well, I...
Yeah, well, and also, there's a, there's a couple of things I'd say here. There's a reason why we've said that the fee should be set initially at forty thousand per space and then reviewed and adjusted annually, because we do think that over time, both as you gain experience and knowledge, and also as conditions change, you want to be able to adjust that in-lu fee appropriately. But also, the other thing to look at is, when we look at many of the thriving, successful districts that have handled this situation, of course, there are hundreds, when they've found that eventually they're thriving, their customers thronging, they're generating lots and lots of revenue, then they'll go to either property-based assessments for the commercial districts in the area, or they'll go to direct user fees for parking and raise additional money that way to solve additional parking problems. So, you know, there's some chance that you wind up at that, you know, super-thriving level, and I think in that case, you'll be in that situation like, say, Tiburon or Redmond, where there's, you know, on the one hand, there's a parking problem to be solved, and on the other hand, there's revenue there to support it, and you can raise the assessments on the commercial property owners to solve that.
Okay, and just...
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll finish up, Mr. Mayor. So I think what I hear you saying is, if you run up against the problem of adequate parking to service whatever the appropriate standard is, then the stakeholders, as Mr. Lamott put it, you know, earlier, the stakeholders in that project could get together, form a benefit assessment district, and start solving the problem that way.
Yeah, exactly.
Is that consistent with your experience?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so the, gosh, there's the Parking District Law of nineteen forty-three, I think.
In nineteen fifty-one.
In nineteen fifty-one, right? And then there's, actually, one of the new laws that passed recently is the, it's called the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, if I recall correctly. So that passed in two thousand and four. That's a method of using tax increment revenue. So there's certainly those mechanisms. On the funding side, you've also got parking fees. A lot of places will put it in place for just the premium spaces as an additional source. You know, so certainly, those options are available if ten, twenty years down the road you find, oh, we're one of those few districts that really came in at the high end.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shuffel. We kind of started off the discussion with, here's a parking plan that is flexible. Both the council and the public comments have provided worst-case scenarios and a lot of what-ifs. So I hope, that tells me that there's someplace in there that there probably is a plan. So I want to look to Mr. Chuck Evans to see if that, maybe there's some answer from the staff. I kind of like Mr. Pro Tem's suggestion that curbside parking is part of the in-lu fee. Maybe our limit for monitoring from eighty percent gets lowered first for a while, like fifty percent. I don't know what's more flexible, but...
If I could just offer up a couple of things, and I was thinking along the same lines. I think what I'm hearing as a result of the discussion tonight is that there's an issue relating to the in-lu fee applying to the on-street parking in front of a development. I think that's, I think that's something that really should be discussed further because I think there's merit to that. The other issue I look at is relative to the residential of one unit. I, you know, I look at my life, and when hopefully someday when my children have gone on, and it's just my wife and I in the St. Bernard, that we're going to still have two parking spaces, whether we're at eight hundred square feet or twenty-five hundred square feet. She's going to have her car, I'm going to have my car, and never the two shall meet. So having said that, I think, you know, I go back to the issue of two parking spaces for resident, and I think it's important that the council cover that adequately, but I think, you know, along the lines of the in-lu fee applying to the existing parking at the curb, I think that's something that, you know, we should...
I guess what I'm trying to say is, based on one comment, so it doesn't look like that we're actually rolling the dice, that we're trying to make sure that we're planning this.
Well, we're not rolling, I think we are, and what the council is doing is, when you look at the body of work that's been completed, we have a consultant who's an expert in the field, and we rely upon that expertise. We've received from the community some good input. We've got good input from a planning commission, what's have you, and we've had some good discussion up here. I think quite candidly, at some point, the council's going to have to come up with their best program today and rely upon future councils to come back at points in time and evaluate this and let this program evolve, because quite candidly, nobody saw the downturn in the economy back in two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight. You know, I don't know what the price of tea in China is going to be in two years. I don't think anybody in this room does. Having said that, I think, based upon the information it's giving, tonight, you need to identify something and move forward with it, get it to the coastal commission, but also charge the future councils, and I know the staff is going to actively manage this as we do everything in this town. So having said that, I think what you need to do is receive input, take the information you've got, and say, this is our, this is our best plan now. I don't want to say best guess, but this is our best plan based upon the information provided, and I think, based upon what I've heard, if you address the residential as well as charge for the street parking, I think that's something that can be added back in and get us moving in that direction, and possibly, I think there's language in here already relating to the ability to review on an annual basis that in-lu fee. So I think, in essence, you've captured some money, and it's like I said earlier in my remarks, you know, you have to decide what the cost is going to be and how you're going to recover the cost without giving away the show. So I think by doing that, what you're doing is you're making a reasonable accommodation to collect revenue, at the same time inspire or incentivize development, because as we heard earlier tonight, we have an arcane parking standard that just doesn't work. So I think there's enough here to get moving in a direction as a jumping-off point.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I think it might be helpful if Ursula described a little bit the discussion the planning commission had on the residential standards. They grappled a little bit with some of the issues that the Mayor Pro Tem brought up, and just for food for thought, if you throw that out there, that might be helpful.
Certainly. We put it in the staff report that the planning commission was reticent on that parking standard for the residential side, but instead of coming up with an alternative standard, they wanted the city council to know about that concern and enable you all to take a look at that for potentially alternative standard.
Ms. Miller, do you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, when I first read this parking plan, I had a lot of the same concerns I'm hearing in here tonight, and I realized that, you know what, I'm not a parking expert, and so I went out to educate myself, and I went and got a book. And I started reading it, and it starts talking about all the same things we're talking about in here. It's the antiquated four-per-thousand parking requirements, which were developed by I T E years ago, and even in their document, and this is the one everybody uses, and it's been adopted and passed down, right in their document, it says, "Use extreme caution when using these numbers." And I'm a science guy, you know, I've got a degree in chemistry, I like a lot of samples, I want to see a lot of data, and I want the data to support the solution. And what they're saying is, we've got a very small sample size here, and the confidence in these, in this data isn't very high. And so, but, that being said, they published their findings anyway, people saw it, and they clung onto it. And I'm reading this in a different book, it's not even their book, it's excerpts from their book, and it's called "The High Cost of Free Parking." And as I'm reading this, I'm realizing that I have an ex, well, we have an expert in Nelson Nygaard, I mean, they are touted as an expert, and they're basically saying, what's in this book, that these arcane parking standards make it very difficult for companies, or for businesses in different services, to come into town, build their services, put them in here for us, and meet these parking requirements, because they just flat-out don't make sense in this environment, okay? They were designed for large suburban shopping centers, for lack of, or office complexes. And as I'm reading through this thing, you know, it really starts talking about, I really started thinking, are we here to support cars? Are we here to service automobiles for our city, or are we here to service the residents? And right now, with our parking standards, we have three times more parking square footage than we do building square footage. That's on this, that's according to these, their documents. I T E will tell you the same thing. That's what this parking document that we currently have today supports. Now, you know, one of the things that it promotes is to always promote people driving multiple cars down, you know, we all love our cars, I love my car, I don't always take public transportation, I take the trolley when I can, because it's a cool, it's a cool thing to have in town. But it doesn't promote people riding bikes, it doesn't promote the walking district that we're trying to build down here. It promotes more parking lots. Two-thirds of my lot covered in asphalt. Is that what we're trying to do in Dana Point? We want two-thirds of our property covered in asphalt in our commercial areas? I don't think that's what anybody wants. I think, according to our town center plan, that took ten years to execute, they want the walking district. That's what everybody was out there doing, you know? And so I look at these things, and I don't know that what we're being presented tonight is the exact right thing. I don't know that, but it does have data behind it, more so than anything else that's being talked about tonight. They've gone out, they've done the studies, they've figured out where they think these parking standards should be. Are they right? Are they wrong? Nobody really knows, because we haven't implemented them. The only thing I do know tonight is that what we're doing now doesn't work. For twenty-five years, we've sat on empty lots in town center, where very few new developments going on, and everything that is new that's coming in is a remodel, and that's not what we were trying to do. We were trying to get that new building, we're trying to get the shops and the services that, when I ran for this office, people were telling me they wanted. And so I... And so I come in, I look at what we're talking about here tonight, and I think what Mr. Chukavas said is we do need to do something. Now, this curbside parking, that was one of the things that scared me, and I have no problem discussing that and even taking it off the table as, you know, they can count those as their spots. You know, I'm going to give a couple of recommendations here that nobody else has given, everybody's been poking holes in this thing, but nobody's offered any other solution, so maybe we can talk about this. What if we took away the curbside as, curbside parking being counted for the commercial spaces? And what if we just said, let's go, if you have, you know, a one-bedroom apartment, you need one space. If you have a two-bedroom, you've got to have two spaces. Let's come up with something, instead of sitting here and saying, I don't like this, I don't like that, let's offer some solutions that we can discuss. And that's what I'm getting at here, is what we're doing now doesn't work, I get it, nobody likes change, change is scary, it scares me. But I know if we don't do something, the large investment we've made in our city is going to sit there and look just the same way it does today. It's beautiful, don't get me wrong, it's made town center look fantastic. But it wasn't designed just to make town center look fantastic, it was designed to attract business and services. So we need to stop kind of talking around this issue right now, in my opinion, and come up with some real solutions. What are we going to do to try to help promote those businesses and services? So I would like to put it out there for discussion for the rest of the council and say, you know, let's talk about what do we want to do with the curb parking, and what do we want to do with the residential? Because those seem to be the two issues that keep coming up. And I'd like to put it out to my fellow council members to discuss that.
Thank you. Mr. Chukavas, what's the next step? If this thing were to be approved, where does it go?
Next step, it would be sent up to, go ahead, Ursula.
Well, there'd be a second reading of the ordinance, and then after that, we would package it up and send it off to the coastal commission for a scheduled hearing before them to amend the L C P.
And any probability of satisfying the coastal commission at this point?
Well, we've met with them twice, and we believe that we have proposed a document that they can support. You never know for certain until you submit it, but we think that we can get, they will likely have some modifications. I would be very surprised if they didn't have any, but I think that they would be some tweaks that then would have to come back to you all, and I think we could get to a place.
So with what you just said there at the end, so we still have more time for us to tweak this?
Well, one of the things, well, Mr. Mayor, one of the things you're going to have to do in order to get this to the coastal commission, if you have, if you make changes tonight and you bring it back for second reading and adoption, let's say in September, and you make changes at that time, then that becomes a new first reading, you have to start it over again, in essence, you're kicking it down the road. So I think what I would strongly recommend is that you take the two jumping off points to see if we can't put a plan together tonight that addresses these concerns, that there's consensus of the council for acceptance, and then just have it scheduled for second reading, get public input then, but if you adopt it at that point, send it to the California Coastal Commission, because you've got to remember, it's probably going to be at least 18 months, at least 18 months before you're going to get a hearing before the California Coastal Commission. So, you know, we need to, and I think we've come a long way from when this started, and especially if we're talking about the curb parking and the residential parking, you know, and again, I think Mr. Miller has pointed out, if the council has any other areas that offer up or should be factored into a solution, let's hear them now and have the council see if there's consensus. So from two council members, I'm hearing residential and curb parking. Now, I would invite the other council members, are there any other issues that they feel need to be addressed so they can be factored into a solution?
Curb parking is mine. Mr. Fixer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those two issues do appear to be the main sticking points. I want to pick up on something that Councilman Miller said, and that is, what we're doing right now is not working. It really goes to the question of why are we even contemplating doing this? And when you think about that, it starts to become a question of what do we have here? We have a land use regulation, a law regarding parking that basically is inhibiting development in the town center. That's why we're here, that's why we're looking at this. And, you know, I basically think that less government is better. This is one of these times that we have done something where we need to look at changing the law to make it a little less restrictive. I also think to myself, these new standards that we're coming up with, they're minimum standards, correct? I mean, these are not, these are not requirements. If the developer wants to put in more spaces, the developer can do that. That brings to mind some concepts to me of the free market. I've heard some talk about, hey, if you own a condo and you want to have someone come over to visit you, that's going to be a problem. I mean, is that the government's problem to figure that out? Or is that the developer's problem to say, I'm about to build something that I'm not going to be able to sell? I mean, these are problems that the developers and the owners of the land can look at. We have hired a consultant who's done an excellent job. I want to also congratulate or thank you, Ursula, and your staff for the work that you've done. You've put together a great plan, I believe, that addresses these issues. I will say, there was the one public comment that I do think is very well-taken. I think it was Mr. Newkirk said about the street parking, the one issue regarding that, in that if we're talking about in lieu fees, if the concept is you need to put in this many spaces, and if you don't, then you have to pay a fee, well, I do believe his view on that is correct. I mean, if you're using those spaces, those are your in lieu spaces. So I think that is a comment that's well-taken, and some of the other council members have indicated. I mean, that is one area where I think we can look at. The residential parking, again, going back to, I'm not sure that all the naysaying that we're talking about is something that we, as the government, need to figure out, all the possible negative consequences, that this is a problem that is best left to the free market, in my opinion. So that, those are my comments for now, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Shofol?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I do like the, I'll call it the Newkirk issue since he brought it up, that public comment. Gary's still here? Yeah. That frees up a lot more for infrastructure development. I would certainly agree with moving the residential standard to two, that seems to make a lot more sense to me, both in terms of my experience of being involved in projects like this and just common sense. Where I'm having a sticking point is where we go when we run up against it and we don't have the supply that we need. Our monitoring comes back insufficient, there are problems, qualitatively and quantitatively. And I think, you know, Mr. Yarger actually had a pretty good suggestion. If we get to that point, and, you know, Patrick was also supportive of that as well, then, you know, then it may be time to turn away from the first part of the plan and the second part of the plan where we enter into a benefit assessment district so that we can address the long-term parking needs of that area. Makes a lot of sense to me that the people beneficially interested in the parking would be the ones who would contribute most heavily to its funding. I mean, after that, I think, you know, certainly the city has invested a tremendous amount in the planning of this project. It's invested, you know, I can't count it up, but close to $18 million in infrastructure in just the last two, two and a half years. Staff resources, every time we spend money on this project, I hear, gosh, if we don't spend, you know, the next dollar, then we'll never get anything done, and, you know, maybe that's true, maybe it's not true. But I would hate to start a parking program only to generate some activity and then run up against a problem that we couldn't solve without the willingness of the people most beneficially interested, who are the owners, the developers, and the ones who are in the position of causing the externalities in the first place. So if we could get to a point where we got to that point, and there would be participation in benefit of assessment district to take care of the realistic parking issues at that time, I would be in a position to support that. I don't quite, thinking through it, I don't know precisely how you get there, but it makes a lot of sense to me. Then we don't have to worry about chasing the, you know, are we going to have enough of that surface parking to service these projects? I understand the comment that, well, you know, it gets better as the project gets bigger and bigger. But what I've seen in my experience is you don't have to have a super thriving project to have a parking problem that it costs a lot of money to fix. And I'd like to have access to the capital to fix that because we have a great project, we should have a great parking solution.
Okay, I'm hearing consensus on the council moving forward, so a member of the council want to take the first stab at creating a motion? Mayor Protem? Sure.
Yeah, I heard Joe discuss earlier the concept of not charging for the curbside parking. And I'm under the opinion that if you do count that for your in lieu of parking or your parking requirements, that you should pay for that. So I think the $40,000 standard should apply if you're going to use curbside parking as part of your parking plan. And I also believe this plan is not mandatory, so the developer can choose to satisfy the old standards, which may be the case, that's developer's choice, and I'm glad that part is in there because I wouldn't want to make this mandatory on everybody. You have a choice here in this plan. So I think if, you know, I think we need to discuss just a little bit more about whether we charge for the curbside parking or whether we don't, and I think we should, if you're going to use it.
I think we should.
I'd like to clarify one thing, I never said we shouldn't charge for curbside parking. What I said was, we shouldn't allow them to count curbside parking for their minimum requirement. That's what, I was with you on that.
And that's the way I understand it.
If they want to use it as in lieu, they're going to have to pay for it as in lieu.
Yeah.
Would there be a way, now I'm addressing the staff, to budget this out so that we'd have some idea what those in lieu fees were going to be? And we could have some way of tracking as to how it was going to go towards procuring the spaces that we needed so we could timeline this thing down? That would certainly give me, and I think a lot of people who spoke tonight, some comfort in starting to get some confidence that theory becomes practicality.
I think in general, people don't like to pay the in lieu fee unless it is less expensive than them providing their onsite parking. So at two-per-thousand, I think that the majority of the applicants will opt to provide all their parking onsite. I think where you'll find the situation where people are willing to pay that $40,000 in lieu fee will be when maybe there's three parking spaces that they can't get onsite without going one extra level, subterranean, and that cost of doing that is excessive and above the $40,000 per space. So I think in that situation, you'll get folks wanting to pay the in lieu fee. So I think that the majority of people will actually provide the parking onsite.
So then happily, if that's the case, we shouldn't need to acquire many of these fiefdoms along the way.
Along the way, Patrick, do you want to summarize that memo you wrote? It was after one of the initial study sessions we had with the city council and I think the planning commission, and there was a question about, at full buildout of the plan, how much of the, I mean, I remember the result, the result was, if you converted 50% of the existing parking into shared parking, that you wouldn't need to build one new parking space under full buildout of the plan, but do you want to talk about that a little bit more?
Sure, I mean, the amount of development allowable under the plan is fairly modest. And we found that because the existing code has generated so much parking than it's actually used, that converting 50% of the current surplus into shared public parking could accommodate all of that new development. I think that, as a practical matter, as new projects come forward, these projects are going to find, in most cases, it's much preferable to actually build the parking themselves on their own site. That creates parking that's, you know, right at their site, where it's easily available to their customers, they actually own it. So I think, based on my experience elsewhere, we won't see that much in the way of in lieu fee usage. Most of people will be building their own spaces.
And so then, if you could answer Councilmember Shofol's question about the need to convert some of the existing into shared without people needing to do that?
Yeah, so I think that the, there will be relatively low need to convert existing shared lots. It's difficult, of course, to predict what the market will bring us in terms of new business proposals, and so that makes it difficult to, basically because of the flexibility that we've built into this plan, it makes it difficult to forecast, well, how much revenue will there be, how much parking demand will there be in any given year? The, so I would just say, I think it's premature to try to put specific numbers on it. But what we have is a package where the, because new development has to either provide its own parking or provide that funding, basically, it funds itself as we go along.
Okay, so again, I get back to if the monitoring shows us that that's not working, for what, I mean, perish the thought, Patrick, that your ratios could ever be wrong, right? I mean, does that ever happen?
You know, in doing this for.
Patrick, a yes or no answer.
Thank you.
There's only one perfect person I know, and it's not you, so I.
The answer is, the answer is yes, I certainly have been wrong.
But more importantly, Patrick, you bring up a very good point, because how many cities have you seen, and I know a firsthand experience, where people try and do what was suggested and predict 20 years out, and they sink millions of dollars into a parking structure only two years after it's opened to try and justify tearing it down and moving it down the block or two? Because guess what, that back then, it was $6 million, we didn't do it in the right ways. But we'll just create another parking district over there and then try and recapture some of the money when we sell this for development after we've torn it down. So again, I think the beauty in any plan is its flexibility into evolve in the future, but also to have the confidence in future city councils to do the right thing because absent Mr. Shofol's role on the planning commission, these five gentlemen didn't vote on the town center plan. But when the people approved the town center plan, they had the faith in future councils to do the right thing for the right reasons, and that's why we're here tonight. So again, this council's carrying the ball and doing that, and so I think at the same time, there's an expectation that future councils, based upon the management that's infused in this, will do the right thing. But, you know, I can't tell you who's going to win the third race at Pemlico in two weeks, and I wouldn't even begin to try.
Right, exactly. I mean, the best parking plans I've seen evolve, they acquire parking when needed and where needed. You see the places, well, I'll take Oxnard, for example, that built a parking structure without even doing proper occupancy studies, did it based on their code. They found, when we went in and did the numbers, they hadn't needed it, they could have done just fine with their existing supply. On the other hand, we see places where, you know, they got a great new proposal that was new Class A office space and movie theaters and restaurants, and at that time, they built the parking, the new development was funding that new parking, and things matched up.
Okay, action at the moment is to adopt the resolution as is or as amended?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve this plan with the one. Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve this plan with the one, the one change, that we do not allow the commercial development to count their, their curbside parking in, in place of their two per, two per thousand. So we take away the curbside parking, does not count as their two per thousand. I'd like to make, make a motion that we, we support it as is with that change.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see a part, as part of that amendment, to raise the residential requirement to two per thousand.
How about two per unit?
Two... Well, I'm not sure, maybe we can ask our expert on what that effect would be, what their, what's two per unit or two per thousand?
Two per unit, two per thousand. The, it's pretty, pretty common to see two bedroom apartments come in at, say, 1,500 square feet, but there's a considerable variation. I, I would, if I could suggest an alternate standard, I would suggest for studios and one bedrooms, make it a minimum of one parking space. For two bedrooms, make it two spaces. For three bedrooms, it up, make it three.
So you're essentially saying one per bedroom, including a studio?
Yeah, stopping at, stopping at three bedrooms, not that you're likely to get any, any, you know, 10 bedroom mansions going in.
Okay, we got a motion and a second with some modifications?
Well, I would... Hold on, I'm not sure we have the modifications finished yet. So are we making the motion that we take away the, the curbside parking, it does not count towards the commercial requirement? On the residential, are we saying one per bedroom, are we saying two per thousand? Because I, I think what you said, two spaces per, two, two parking spaces per thousand is actually going to require fewer spaces than saying for efficiencies in one bedrooms, or every bedroom's required a parking space. So which way do you want to go with that?
Well, I, I think we should probably go for the more inclusive standard where you go one per, one per bedroom.
If I could, there's a motion and a second for a discussion. What I would suggest is that Mr. Tomlinson offer up a substitute motion with his amendments and see, then see if there's a second.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer up a substitute motion for one bed, one parking spot per bedroom, plus the payment of in lieu fees for any parking used, any off-street parking used for your calculations.
Is there a second to the amended motion? Hearing none? We'll go back to the original motion. Mr. Mueller, you want to repeat it?
I will amend my motion to say, we're not going to allow the curbside parking, but I will amend it to say two part, or two parking spaces per thousand for the residential.
Is there a second to that?
Does the original second or second that? And I've lost track of who that was.
We're back to, we're back to a new motion by Mr. Mueller? Or are you restating your original motion?
No, I amended my original motion.
You amended your original motion, so I need a second for this, for this amended motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Please cast your vote.
I just, clarification, it's still a minimum of one spot per unit, which is what we had always recommended. We had previously recommended one space per thousand square foot on residential with a minimum of one space per unit. So now recommend, the, the change is two with a minimum of one per unit. Thank you.
Correct.
Cast your vote. Now we got it. And the motion passed three to two.
So can I clarify what I think just occurred?
Good luck.
What I think you did was you moved the staff recommendation with the two changes that we just discussed with respect to both resolutions and the ordinance. Is that effectively what, what you were trying to accomplish? So we've handled all three actions in one item.
All three actions happened, because all we did, for the second item, it's all we had to do was read that, make it the first reading, and then the third action is to do the certification for an LCPA. So do you need a, you need a second motion for the LCPA?
We're good.
Okay.
We understand what you're trying to do. I just wanted to get that clarification. I don't see anybody nodding their head that no, that I got it wrong, so.
Okay.
We'll have a second reading of the ordinance at our next meeting, and you'll see the changes that you suggested tonight woven into that.
Moving on to item 20. Unfinished business being no unfinished business, we go into new business for item 20. Staff report?
Yeah, item number 20 is a follow-on from the last discussion, the last discussion item, and this is where Patrick from Nelson Nygaard referred to the fact that we would be looking at setting up a, a preferred, preferential, a preferred parking district north of PCH, outside of the coastal zone, and then a parking benefit district south of Del Prado within the coastal zone, to try and manage the parking impacts to the residential areas stemming from the development that will occur in the town center. So with that, I think we've discussed it in the last staff report that was given, so if there's any questions the council may have, we'd be happy to respond to them to clarify those questions.
Is there any questions by the council of staff? Seeing none, I'll open up the public comments section. First to speak, who'd be called on, is Joseph Madero, followed by George Luhon.
Mr. Mayor, may I please the city council? My name is Joe Madero, and I, I live on Amber Lantern, and I applaud the commission for their patience. This is my first opportunity to address you, but I applaud you for that. I live at the very end of Amber Lantern, so I enjoy the best view, I think, in all of Southern California, and that's shared with a, an overlook there that is beautiful, and I don't know whether to thank Mr. Fowler or his partner for the beautiful new pergola that was just installed, making it even more beautiful. But it is a gathering place, and that, that street, Amber Lantern, is one of the lantern streets, and it's heavily used, obviously, people coming down constantly. We have busloads of elderly people coming, and they're dropped off there, families picnicking. On any given day, you have at least a dozen people from the halfway houses. They're all smoking because they can't drink or have drugs. I, I don't mind that because it could very well be one of my sons, so I'm hoping they have the best, but the point is it's very, it's very crowded. So I just want to talk about my observations for the past two years, and I think you gave me a name for my talk, Spillover. We live there, and the displacement that was caused by the town center, and I, and I happen to be a big supporter, I think the town center is going to add vitality and beauty to our, our city. I'm a big supporter of that. But the unintended consequences, as we know, when that limited some parking, it went over to the next street, is that La Cresta? Santa Clara, I'm sorry, onto Santa Clara, and so that began filling up, and then we saw our streets, the lantern streets, Violet and Amber, filling up, and they were filling up with not just the sightseers, but the, the staff of the restaurants and the other businesses, and they were being told to park there. I could tell they were from these restaurants and things like that, and it made sense because the spaces are filling up, and we want our customers to be close, and so staff is filling up the lantern streets. And that continues to be a problem. So the spillover that Patrick talked about is now in place. And then Chief, you did a great job of stopping the overnight parking on Harbor down below, which was rampant. They've moved upstairs now, so we have overnight parking of vans, and we have overnight parking often from even RVs. Winnebago's actually parking several days because the view is great, and they block it for others. So the point is that if we do this, I, I think that we ought to take a holistic approach to it and make sure that it's done evenly. So I, paid parking is fine, I find the fact that if you just do it on one street, people are confused, they don't know how to pay for the parking, they will find, the waterfall is the easiest way, they will look for the free parking. So the lantern streets, which are residential parking now, need to be treated the same because otherwise everybody will be parking wherever it's free. So we all know that regulations unequally imposed and unequally enforced are unenforceable, and so I just ask you to be consistent in what you do with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question based on the comment? No, you, you don't need to stay there if you don't want, you can if you'd like, but does this, does this, does this proposed parking district cover the cross streets as well as Santa Clara?
Yes, it does.
It does? Okay.
So it would be all the lantern, the, the...
I think so, yeah.
Amber and everything going forward?
That was my understanding, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you for asking that question.
So I want, want to clarify that, so that starts at Del Prado and moves...
Santa Cl...
It actually starts at the alley that's between Del Prado and Santa Clara, but it includes all the street sections on the ocean side of the alley, whether it's the lantern streets, Camino Cap and Santa Clara, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. George Luhon, followed by Wendy McDonald.
Good evening, council. George Luhon, resident and business owner. I'll be brief, it's been a long night. Thank you for everything so far. In favor of the parking benefit district, I am in favor of that district. I think it's crucial at this point. Also, back in November of 24, of 2014, we submitted to the city is actually a letter with all the residents of Amber Lantern, on 3,400 block of Amber Lantern, in favor of some type of residential parking district for the reasons that were stated by Joe, for the issues that we have on that street at night particularly, and so I think this is crucial to the wherewithal for the residents there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Wendy McDonald, followed by Steve Carey.
Wendy McDonald, resident of Dana Point, I live on the north side. It's interesting to me that you say, okay, we're going to have these districts, but when I drive down PCH, there's this lovely sign that says business parking that way up, El Czar, which is homes, so I guess that's where we're pushing people. I have a neighbor who has a motor home, small, parks it on the street, can't anymore though, because we're now not allowed to have that as our pursuit of happiness because there's not enough parking. So when we are doing this district for parking in the residential, what does that entail? How many vehicles can a person have? I happen to have one of those families where my children have come home, my adult children. My son-in-law is a disabled veteran, so my grandson, my daughter, my husband and I all live in the same home. We manage beautifully, but we have more vehicles than two. Many, many people now have more vehicles than two in their neighborhood, in their house, in their apartment. I think it's a good idea that residents are allowed to park on their streets and be on their streets. I may not want a motor home, that's not my pursuit of happiness, but I don't really want to see my neighbor now have to pay to park his motor home somewhere else because we've now chosen that that may be his vehicle of choice, but because it doesn't fit the parameters of whatever the new Dana Point is going to be, he can't park on the street. I am a little worried when I hear thiefdom and, oh, we'll just have all this shared stuff, and we'll get these people to give up whatever they have paid for or owned so that we can have some common good parking. Parking is important, it's very important for businesses, it's important that people can walk and do whatever. The people that are talking, and I have great empathy for you, where you live on, on your street, and people want to be here, and so they want to park in your neighborhood. I also see many elderly people drive up to look over the cliffs and see the beauty that's there, and they can't actually walk the two and a half blocks or four blocks that it might be. So when we are doing our setups for the preferential parking districts, I'm just not sure what your parameters are going to be. Could you make them as inclusive as possible? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve Carey?
Good evening, Steve Carey, Dana Point resident. We've owned a house on Santa Clara for 20 years. Been through all the planning process with the town center committee, and went to every single one of those meetings, had a lot of input. After, now that you guys have considered 19 tonight, and you've said that there's enough parking in the town center, you should have no problem passing number 20 here. I support number 20 in its entirety, with the exception of defining the terminology for resident. I think that if we're going to have this in our neighborhood, Santa Clara I'm talking about, on our side, is that in the past, it's been brought up in this council that any Dana Point resident ought to be able to get a parking pass. That would defeat the whole process of this proposal and would allow town center residents to get passes and use our neighborhood as their parking lot. It would defeat the whole purpose. Passes should only be given to those who live on the street that is metered, and again, I just support this plan. Hope you guys do too.
Thank you very much. And I'll bring it back to the council. I completely agree with the last comment that by passing item 19, number 20 is necessary, and I like to talk about that because the idea of revitalizing the business section of Dana Point began in about 1969, and the way to solve that spillover problem was to create cul-de-sacs to prevent cars from getting into the, into, onto Santa Clara, cul-de-sacs at the alley. Of course, now, now the coastal commission won't allow us to impede people's access to the coastal block of the streets. That, that solution can't be utilized, and so now we've come up with a new solution, and this is it tonight. So are there any other comments or questions by the council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just the definition of resident, is it the people on the street or anybody in Dana Point? Because I was under the impression it was the people in the preferential parking district.
That's, that's correct, yes.
Okay, that, that's the intent?
That's correct.
I, I'd move the recommended action.
There's a second? There's a second? Any discussion? Cast your vote. And that's a five zero. Staff reports?
I just wanted to thank Steve Carey for coming out tonight. Steve, I promised Steve that we would not forget him or his residents, and I want to thank him for staying engaged in such a positive way. It's always nice to see Steve in the room. The only thing I want to just say is thank you to the council for your kind words and your, your vote of confidence. I couldn't do it without the great people who work for me in the crowd, and I'm just, my wife and I are just tickled pink to be here and being part of what Dana Point is all about, so thank you for what you do, and thank you for your vote of confidence.
Mr. Munoz?
I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Schoffel? Mr. Vexoric?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to give a quick report concerning the Orange County Fire Authority, of which our city is a member. Since the last meeting, I attended two meetings of the Fire Authority Board of Directors, and I just wanted to give a, an update as to what happened. There was a bill in the, in the state legislature to reduce the representation on the board down to 13 members, of which Dana Point was most likely to lose a seat. We, along with almost every member agency, opposed that bill. Ultimately, a sort of compromise was reached wherein the board gave up its alternate representatives, and in return, the bill has been put on hold temporarily, so we have been able to maintain our representation on the fire authority for now. So that's a good result, however, I do think that losing the alternate is, is not a good result, but that is the current status now. We simply have one representative on the fire authority, but we are still represented. And otherwise, I will turn in my list of meetings to the clerk after the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Miller? Mr. Miller?
Thanks, council member Vexoric, for covering for me while I was out of town at the fire authority. I've just got a quick list of meetings. On June 17th, I traveled to Sacramento to lobby against 1217. July 14th, I was at the going-away luncheon for Jennifer Ranson. And this morning, July 21st, I spoke at the Nagelschewer's Men's Club.
Mayor Protam?
I have nothing, no comments this evening, but I will turn in my list of meetings to the city clerk.
Thank you. And I, too, will turn in my meeting minutes to the city clerk. With no further business, this meeting's adjourned.